Welcome, everybody, to our regular council meeting. The date is December 21st, time 7:00 PM. Could we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please remain standing for a moment of silence for our first responders and military members? Monica, could we get roll call, please?
Roll call, Councilmember Soto, present. Councilmember Moran. Councilmember King.
Present.
Mayor Protemp Garcia.
Present.
Mayor Aguilar.
Present.
For the record, council members, Mayor Protemp and Mayor Arnaud attendance.
In regards to closed session announcements, we have nothing to report. We know, we do have an item that's gonna move on from our closed session. It's just item number seven. Counsel, any changes to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, can you repeat that again?
Repeat that again?
Can you repeat that again?
In regards to changes to the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You said something about item number seven?
Okay, so under closed session, we're gonna be continuing talking with one of the items. It's under discussion potential action item, which is item number seven. And then on our closed session item number one, we're denying the claims.
That was a 5-0 vote?
It was a 5-0 vote.
That was a 4-0.
I stand corrected, yes.
Okay, any changes to the agenda? I don't see any, so we're gonna move on to citizen comments, this section of the agenda. All members of the public to address the city council on any item not otherwise on the agenda. Members of the public, when recognized by myself, should come forward and identify themselves. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening. For items which are on the agenda this evening, members of the public will provide an opportunity to address the city council as each item is brought up for discussion. Citizen comments?
I'm sorry, Sheriff, can I say something real quick, Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, can we just all be respectful when we're up here giving your comment? We're allowing you guys three minutes, so I wish you guys to just keep that in mind, be respectful to each other. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Vern Lorinkey, Sheriff, Coroner, Merced County. Just to kinda give an update on some stuff that's been going on, I understand we, a person coming up here a while ago was making comments pertaining to the contract and the payment schedule of our interim police chief until this council comes together and gets a police chief. For the facts, the first month here, a total, including vehicle expenses, was $15,895. Now, what some folks may not know or understand is that money that was paid is also for the benefits, everything. Lieutenant Hale, Chief Hale, in here, does not receive all that funding. That goes in, as everybody in here knows about payments and employees, but it was reported to this council by somebody here that $50,000, it's, they gotta learn to better understand contracts when they're being made. Having said that, I can leave this for any council member here. This is the billing that we're gonna have. Secondly, I think it's very important for this council to understand that collectively in this room, you have the authority to take care of business collectively. As individuals, you do not have authority on any department or agency within this city. You do have it in here. The only employee that you have authority over is the city manager. I will share with you that I've had experience with two of your city managers, your current sitting one and a prior. I will let you know that your current sitting manager has the intelligence enough to know when to ask for professional help, and she did. We're gonna sit here and provide the help as long as we need to for your city until you do get a chief in here. My job as the chief law enforcement officer in this county is to guarantee that every citizen has law enforcement services without interruption. We're gonna provide professional, courteous, and by all means, exact law enforcement, okay? And contrary to what was said earlier, I do not hunt people. Nowhere ever in the history of my 43 years, where in this state do we hunt people. So if anybody's gonna have a comment or write anything about me or the sheriff's office to understand, you're gonna need to deal with me directly on it. So I will not take it sitting down. It's not gonna happen. We're here, we want to be here for the citizens, and I will tell you that your agency, you should be very proud of. The men and women in that agency are very stellar, very professional, and very good at what they do. So, you know, keep in mind, you do have a good agency. There was nothing broken when we came in here. So, having said that, I'll be happy to sit around for anybody who wants to entertain any comments or questions for me. If not, I'll leave the meeting, but I do want you to know that your city manager was swimming in a lane that she understood, and when she needed law enforcement services, she came to me. That's where I am an expert at. Got 43 years in, there's not anybody in here that can say they've been doing anything as long as I've been doing it. So, if any council members want me to stick around, I will. If not, I'll do the old proverbial, "I ride off into sunset." So, Chief Hale will continue to take care of business here as far as his job duties and such, and if I am needed, Chief can get ahold of me, city manager can get ahold of me, I think a couple of council members can also get ahold of me. Any questions, and do I need to do anything with this?
Counsel, any questions for Sheriff? No questions, counsel?
Okay.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Anybody want this? This is the breakdown of the hours and expenditures.
I'm gonna provide it to Monica.
I can do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Catherine Cheryl Rodriguez. I have five questions that I would like to have an answer. So if you wanna get out your pencil and paper, here we go. To Vanessa, question number one, is Brad Grant acting as the finance director in any way, shape, or form? Question number two, how many hours a week is he here? Question number three, what is his hourly rate? Hourly rate? Question number four, if you can't give me the hourly rate, can you give me his step on the salary schedule? Question number five, in the last 12 months, have you had a grievance filed against you? Yes or no?
Mayor, council members, in regards to these questions, Mr. Grant acts in the capacity of an extra-help retiree.
Could you speak into your mic? It's hard to hear.
I'm, can you, everybody hear me? Okay, Mr. Grant, he is helping the city in the finance department as an extra-help retiree. That is his capacity. Extra help, as I explained to you before, it is to provide services and in the terms of backlog and anything that it's described within the Culver skyline. The hourly rate of this, I don't have that with me, but the step, it would be the highest, the step E in the salary schedule of the finance director, and I am not aware of any grievances at the moment.
Okay, step E, finance director?
That is correct.
And how many hours is he here on a weekly basis?
It depends on as-needed basis. Extra help can be anywhere, it's on a project base right now, and we are getting backlog completed.
Okay, will that be, will he be paid on the warrant register or as part of payroll?
Extra help, it's paid through payroll.
Can you give an approximate number of hours per week so we can get an idea of how much we're paying for the extra help?
I would have to come back, I don't have that information, Mayor.
And as for question number five about grievances?
Mayor, I'm not aware that I have any grievances.
Any other comments?
Good evening, counsel, Mayor. I'm on citizens' comments, I guess I'm not on the, you know, under supervisor's comments. You know, going around the county, being, I get a lot of calls, comments of why, what's going on with the circus in Livingston, and what's with the council, why they're making so many bad decisions in this community. A lot of conflicts of interest, brand regulations, and so on and so on. You know, as I stated before, I supported most of you for council, mayor, I walk for you. Me and Jose Moran walked a lot for you. And I don't think, one time, you walked along with us, you know, in your support. And I asked you a lot of times, you know, why do you keep, you know, you know, getting together with these individuals, certain individuals, 'cause they're gonna make bad decisions, and they have. But you said, you always said several times, "I'm not with them, I'm not with them," and you know what I'm talking about. But you are, everything shows that you are. Here you are, here we are, trying to give bad contracts to a city manager with severance pay for six months and six months before notice, before you can, you know, fire her. That's a bad contract. But no contract, you know, it can be a 12-months severance, the same thing as 12-months severance. We had another city manager that, they had a 12-months severance, but you know, that's a long time for the citizens to pay. You guys don't pay, we all pay, sooner or later. But every contract can be broken, it can be, you know, there's always a way around a contract for termination of a city manager. I know Vanessa's a smart person, but she doesn't have the qualifications for this She's a finance director, she knows the numbers, but she doesn't have, you know, there might be bad decisions continually being made, especially with, with the way, you know, it's on the agenda to release employees from their past issues, personal issues, after 12 months. That's a bad decision. But, you know, like I said, I'm just here to support, but, you know, I wasn't gonna support the recall, but hey, you guys made me get into this. Thank you very much. I know in bad faith, you guys took my name off the top where I could've spoken for a longer time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor, if you wanna continue to talk, you can. Out of courtesy, as a supervisor, if you have something to report, that, from what I understand, was a citizen comment, but if you have a supervisor's report to give now, we can allow it, I will allow it, and we don't make you do anything. We didn't make you support or recall.
Thank you, but, you know, I'll take my, appreciate it, but I'll take my three minutes. My name is not up there, it's been up there for 30-plus years, and now, in bad faith, it was taken off. You know, where I can answer your questions, I can answer the citizens' questions, but it was taken off, you know, in bad sentiment. You know, I understand the politics, and I understand, you know, I've been here for 19 years, 14 in the city of Livingston, and five years in the county now. But, you know, you take away, this is not my time. I come here to report for you guys to answer your questions, to answer questions from the citizens. And now you took that ability from the citizens to ask me questions. I gladly stay after or before to answer questions of the citizens outside, but if you take my name off the top, you know, and it's not fair for the citizens to be limited to three minutes when you're taking my time off from here. Thank you.
If you would like your name put back on there, you know, it's easiest, you know, approaching me or reaching out to me and talking about it and communicating, so you could've done that too, you know? I mean, if you thought it was in bad faith, we could've easily talked about it.
Why was it? Why was it taken off? You know, I didn't ask to be taken off, I wasn't consulting, I wasn't, I didn't get a call from you. You know, I'm not gonna come in and beg, beg you to put me on the agenda.
It wasn't for your benefit.
It's up to you guys, 'cause, you know, we're supposed to work together, we work together in the county with MCAG, with all the commissions, and I gladly, you know, we sit together, we make decisions together for our community, but to take it off, I shouldn't have to come back over here and ask you to put my name back on there. That's your decision up there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, my name is Lori Johnson, and I'm a resident, and that's what I am. Okay, so I feel his frustration about having a city manager who isn't qualified because it seems like you guys are following in the footsteps of Atwater, and it's a dark road to go down, being like Atwater and following in their footsteps, because what they do to, what their schemes have done to the residents, or some of the residents, are horrible, horrible, they're crimes, and we've proved that they're crimes. And so this is for Tom, I don't know if you remember me, I'm sure you do. Okay, so, explain to me in a short version of what the city attorney's job is. What is your main job?
Well, it's a very broad, obviously, yeah. It's to provide advice, guidance, and interpretation. You're a counselor in the form, in the real form of an attorney, more than any other type of law, I would say.
Okay, so you advise your clients not to get into situations that, that could be criminal, right?
Of course, yeah.
Okay, so, question two. If the city attorney, if the cities, I mean, if your attorney, if your client is doing something that, you know, the stuff, like, against the law or borders on that, you would be advised them, you would advise them against it. So if the residents feel that you're, you're just standing by and letting them do it, like, maybe you're more a part of it than what we think, what do we do? Then what do we do? Because I know the cities say that you work for them and that, not for the people, but they work for the people. So if they're working for the people who, you, everybody, and you work for them...
I work for the people through them.
Okay, so, do we have a voice about how you're doing your job?
Through, if, as, yeah, you would talk to the council, who would then talk to me.
Okay, so...
But this would not be the place for it, obviously, because it's...
But, I'm, 'cause the things, 'cause I'm just saying, because the past, I know you guys have a reputation, the lawyers in the firm, they have a reputation, and they should uphold this better reputation, because what happened with us, it continued, it got so much worse, and now we're homeless because of all that was allowed to be done to us. But I, I'm gonna ask, okay, so, so do you know, okay, so what I wanna know is, the things that were happening in Atwater that were proven crimes, and you were, you and Doug were sitting there with your clients, and we were coming to the council meetings telling you guys about these crimes, time after time.
The crimes happened, so-called crimes, and I'm not sure exactly what you're talking about, but the mess was there before we got there, we came in to clean it up.
Be that as it may.
We came in to clean it up, and a lot of people hated us for it. That's what happened in that one.
Be that as it may.
Ma'am, you have reached your, ma'am, ma'am, you have reached your three minutes already.
I'm having a hard time, sir, she's got something, she wants to say, I think you should give her just a little opportunity to say.
Go ahead, go ahead and finish your statement, please, ma'am, but we have to move along.
Okay, so what I'm, okay, so what I'm, I'm letting the residents of Livingston know that the, these lawyers have a reputation, and what happened to us, and they sat back there, they, actually, they got paid millions, there's millions of dollars that was spent defending the city, fighting the, fighting us, two people, fighting two people, and the, the money was outrageous what they were spent in that law firm, and I just want the residents to know that, that they damaged our life, and this attorney sat back and let them do it, and it's gonna happen here. I see everything that happened in Atwater happening here now.
You guys don't even know what's going on.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Any other citizen comments?
On the line.
Richard Johnson?
Yes, Ruth Cargova, there.
I'm not gonna state our address for fear of retaliation, but Atwater, City of Atwater officials, city leaders. It's disgusting what you guys have done, what, not you guys, I'm sorry, what the City of Atwater, and Tom Hallahan, Mike White, what, Doug White. They made us go four years without water, water. I carried buckets of water for four years. They tried to kill, they nearly killed my wife, she had two seizures. Anyway, I'm gonna get back to this, all for that piece of property we owned. This is for you, mister lawyer. I'm not sure if you remember us, but...
I covered two city council meetings in Atwater, once when Doug's mom died, and once when he got in a wreck on his way to the meeting. That's the extent of my involvement in the city of Atwater.
But you were Atwater city attorney while they committed crime after crime against us, two people, me and my wife, my wife and I. We can clearly see that is exactly what you are doing in Livingston, and I'm asking you to resign now, or every week from here on out, my wife and I will be here exposing all of those crimes, and how, and how, while you were their legal representation, they were able to steal our home anyway. We were saying it for seven years, the whole time peacefully protesting our property, you know, on our property. They didn't like it, they don't like anybody standing up to them. I'll be damned if I was gonna not stand up to corruption as bad as it was against my wife and I. They stole our home, we're now homeless. Do not deny anything. Next meeting, I will have documentation in hand, we will. You know we will not stop until your resignation, so think long and hard, because we have the facts, and the nonbelievers will believe when we get through. I'm so frustrated, this is seven years, I've been out of the house eight months, almost nine months, and I'm still so frustrated and angry for losing my whole life, everything we've ever worked for in our life, it's gone, and you helped them take it. We've been down this road before. We have also gotten a joke of a settlement, but we beat you, you helped them make sure we lost so much more than we won. You should've just told them to buy our home at fair market value, anything. Not one red cent did we get for that property. That eminent domain, they did nothing, they took it, straight out took it from us. And our real estate agent, Dennis Nambody, helped them do it. What, Lori, what? We're not gonna get anywhere if I don't say the truth, what's going on. Maybe I should've said it, man. It's very sad what you guys have done to us. Who's can...
Sir, you have reached your time limit.
At fair market value.
I gave you additional time.
Huh?
I gave you additional time, you reached your time limit.
You will give me?
No, I already gave you additional time, you have reached your three minutes.
You will give me another second? You will give me no more time?
Finish your last statement.
Okay. Your job is not to cover up their crimes and help them get away with destroying people's lives. What kind of people enjoy destroying other people's lives? Evil people, that's who. I would like to address the council, you work for the residents of Livingston, and you are expected to make sure they are satisfied, satisfied with the work you are doing and not spending their hard-earned tax dollars so frivolously. I happen to know that the cost of hiring these attorneys are so outrageous, they must come with some special lessons that are given behind closed doors. Thank you. I will be seeing you at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Mayor and council, I'll go ahead and address this again, and please listen to this. I last served as the city attorney for Atwater in 2002. It's almost 20 years ago. Our firm took the contract a couple of years ago against my advice. I told my partner, "You can get the job, but I'm never going down there, it's, people are too crazy, I'm not gonna do it." And I didn't, except for two times, I went to two meetings. I did not work on anything, I went to two meetings to cover for Doug White, my partner, one because his mother died, and the second time because he got in a car wreck on the way to the meeting. That is the extent of my involvement in the city of Atwater, and as I said, that's why I was, it's this very thing is why I was not gonna do any work for the city of Atwater. And, and there's two sides there, I'm gonna find out what, what, what the other side of the story is on this, I can assure you that. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments?
Did you say Doug was your partner, or is your partner?
Any other citizens' comments?
Ruth Cargova.
I heard that Mayor Samrad, let me say this, we still do work for the city of Turlock, so if we were so bad, why would they have us still working for them, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I wasn't talking to the attorney.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Please.
Yeah, you talked about...
He should not be belittling the citizens here.
Go ahead, sir.
No, please tell him, tell your, tell him, unless he's being addressed, he should not be making comments to the public. Please tell him right now.
He was referring, he was referring to your comment.
No, 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 this is, this is plain wrong right here.
Okay.
This is plain wrong.
Go ahead, sir, start with your comments.
I'm a citizen of Livingston, this is plain wrong.
Okay.
He does not rule Livingston.
He does not, you're right.
So, he had no right to make that comment to me, sir.
Okay.
Please tell him right now.
He was responding.
No, please tell him in front of everybody, he is not, no, one, one, when it's right, it's right.
I will have a conversation.
He should not, ask him to please not to refrain from making comments to citizens.
I will have a conversation with him.
I was talking to a citizen, no, say in front of everybody, he said it to me in front of everybody, you say it in front of everybody. Don't you guys agree with that?
Yes, yes.
Make him say it right now, right now.
Go ahead.
We're tired of him belittling people here.
Okay, go ahead.
Please tell him right now.
Go ahead.
No, please tell him right now.
Continue.
He had no right, I was talking to a citizen.
Okay.
I didn't address you, I didn't address the council.
All right, go ahead with your comments.
No, please tell him.
Go ahead.
You're not gonna do it?
Why do you want me to tell him?
That he should not be belittling people, I was talking to somebody else.
He already knows not to belittle anybody, we, Raul made a statement at the beginning of the meeting, to be respectful of everybody.
No, okay, I didn't even say a word, he disrespected me.
Okay, he was responding to your comment.
When Mayor Protemp said we should respect each other, it goes both ways.
We should move forward with respect, let's continue on with your comments.
Okay, please restart the clock. Please restart the clock.
Go ahead.
Okay, council, mayor, I just have a couple of questions. On your agenda, there's an item says, this item on consent for number four, will you allow the public to address this item later, or is that gonna be part of the citizen comment? And then another, another one on item number seven? I didn't quite understand, you said you're gonna go back into closed session after the meeting, or you're gonna bring it back another date?
No, no, we're talking about number seven. What was your other, your first question?
The number four, will you allow that as a, will you pull that item for a public discussion?
It's under consent.
Yeah, but I'm asking, will you allow that to be pulled for a public comment? Well, can one of the council members pull it, then it, then it comes out to public address?
Yes, it does, and then we can do... Yes, it does, and then we can be, do pull.
So would one of the council members please pull this item for discussion?
We could ask, I'll ask under consent, um, agenda, if somebody wants to pull it out, or I'll pull it out myself.
Thank you. Okay, now for my general comment. Council, you guys know what's going on in the community. One, you should be better connected to the community than you are right now. Face the reality of what's happening, you guys are making some horrible decisions. Please, I haven't been to this meeting for a long time, and I have not been publicly doing this thing to you guys at all. I gone talked to Vanessa a couple of times, with total respect, I did not disrespect her at all. I think you would agree with that, Vanessa. So, please, listen to the public, we know how you're gonna vote already. The only way we can get you to vote something the opposite of what you want is by supporting what you guys wanna do, because when citizens speak, you will do the exact opposite, because that's how much you hate the people right now. You do, you do hate us. Yes, we're part of the recall, but we're still citizens of the city, and all of ours have the best interest for the city. Maybe it's not aligned with what you're doing, but none of us, the citizens out here, really have bad thoughts for Livingston. Respect him, you, you said to, for us to respect you, we don't get any respect either. I called each and every one of you over, over the week, and, and, and questioned on a subject, not one person picked up or even returned the call. So this is the council that we have now, you tell us here, please call us, we're gonna answer your phone. Maria, you know you've had missed calls from you, Juan, you know you've had missed calls from me, but no, don't pick up, no nothing. I remember when that was never the case. Just because we have difference of opinion, doesn't mean we can't work together on things, there are some things we can all agree on. And I know, my three minutes are up, and thank you for pulling these items for further discussion, thank you.
Hi, um, okay, well, I don't know where to start, but, um, I'll say this in English, but then I'll say in Spanish, because I want more, um, people understand what I'm saying, and it's why I'm here. Okay, so the, the last time when I was here, I asked a question to, um, the city mayor, and I remember that he say, um, not to me, to the, to the, um, to the other residents, he say, if you guys have like, any, any questions, you guys wanna talk to me, can you please come to my office, I, I'll answer your questions, something like that. But I was here, and I was wish you can answer my question that day, because why I have to go to your office if I wanna, if, there's more people that they wanna know your answer, not only me? Okay, well, I'll say this in Spanish right now. La última vez que estaba acá, escuché gente también que estaba diciendo, ¿verdad?, que están, quieren la, que haya más agua, que la agua que está aquí está muy contaminada. Y sí es cierto, la agua de acá de Livingston ustedes lo saben, que está bien contaminada. Y mi pregunta es, ¿por qué se va a gastar tanto dinero en un, contratando a una city manager que no está muy, um, en esta posición para el trabajo, en, para agarrar toda la información que se necesita? En otra cosa, ¿por qué se va a gastar tanto dinero para contratar al sheriff también? En gastar tanto dinero cuando las prioridades, yo pienso, aquí en Livingston, queremos tener agua limpia, como en otros condados. Otra cosa, no me gusta lo que está pasando aquí en Livingston. En ahí por donde yo vivo, por el, la grapevine, se hicieron casas nuevas. Todas esas casas nuevas se hicieron para venderse, yo digo que está bien, pero casi ninguna casa fue casi muy barata, de bajos ingresos. No sé, ustedes no más piensan en vender casas, o no piensan hacer de bajos ingresos acá, en, para las demás personas también. Sabemos que aquí en Livingston la mayoría somos, trabajan de, en el, en el campo, no ganan lo que va a ganar un sheriff acá, o un oficial, o... No tenemos buen trabajo para comprar una casa. Yo, en, yo conozco mucha gente que, por eso hago este video en español, porque los invito a que vengan, aquí sí se habla espa, sí los van a entender en español. Aquí tenemos al, al señor, consejal, a mister Moran, que los entiende en español. So, los invito, residentes de Livingston, por favor, vengan, gracias.
Mayor, if you will, have someone translate that for people that didn't understand.
Sure. Though, our commentator was concerned in regards to the water in Livingston, she was, she made comments that we have contaminated, contaminated water, or, and, and that the city manager position was, the person being appointed for the city manager position was not qualified for this kind of job to deal with in the city. And she also shared that the city is not in the position to pay as much money on a contract for a sheriff's, for the sheriff's department. And she also commented on homes being built on, in and around the, the area of grapevine for sale, and that it is not low housing communities, and that she was asking for the priorities of the council not being in and around providing low house, low-cost housing, if the community itself, it's, it's a community that has low wages. I'm sorry? She, she mentioned about council member Moran being able to be a Spanish speaker, and that she invites residents, and, and she invites the public to, like, go and, and speak and, and, and address and get informed, and she was addressing that comment to the Spanish community.
Good evening, mayor and councils, I'd like to wish everyone in the city of Livingston a Merry Christmas. Basically, I'm here disappointed in a lot of the decisions that the council has made. We got rid of a great city manager, we recently had a chief, so I'm wondering, you know, how much severance paid that went to? We're looking at hiring or contracting with the sheriff's department. I think it's a slap in the face you have to the sergeants at the police department that could act as acting police chief. Nothing against the sheriff's department, they're a fine organization, but we have people that can be police chiefs at the police department, so if I was the department as sergeant, I would be offended that I was not asked, or one of the sergeants, to run the police department. You might be surprised that they could actually run the police department. I think that the contracts that you're trying to give out should go to the city employees, give them a raise, they're the backbone of the city of Livingston. You have three former mayors, one, Mayor Samra, Mayor Rodriguez, we never put the, the city in the situation that it's in, we always thought about the people, and we listened to the people. You know, I gave back to the community, I was a football coach with youth football for 12 years, you know, I worked with the, the mayor, we were trying to, you know, fix the fire department here. Where did this go bad? I mean, did we, did we win the lottery that we have all this money that we can just hand it out? I go, those, you know, those are poor decisions, think about the people. I have family here, I have loved ones here, I have friends, I always thought about the community, and I think you lost that somewhere, you know? I think we should be thriving, not trying to survive, so unless, you know, we have all this money to hand out, you know, I, I could run the police department, I'll do it a lot cheaper, you know? So, uh, think about the people, at the end of the day, you're gonna make your decisions and you have to live with it, so, you know, if you're comfortable with spending, you know, the tax dollars of the, the hard-working people, where is that gonna come from? Make some good decisions, we have people that can run the police department, we have people that, there are organizations that have retired police chiefs, have retired city managers, you could contract with them, and it'd be a lot cheaper, so, I just highly suggest and gave you a device from three former mayors, listen to the public and make decisions for the public. Thank you very much, and have a Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Hello?
I'm going, thanks for your permission. I come here today as a husband. And I think that ranks, forgive me, folks, a little bit above just being an employee or a citizen here, because my wife works here. And when I leave to go to work, and when she leaves to go to work, I wanna feel confident that she's safe, I wanna feel confident when she comes home, she's had a good day, and I, and I don't have that confidence. Madam, madam city manager, I can't even remember your name, I apologize. I don't think that you're equipped for this job, and the reason why I say that, no ma'am, please look at me, the reason that I say that is because you had two layups, two very simple, easy people to let go because of their grievances against one of your ladies, and I think that, sir, I think that one of our jobs as men, especially in this community, in any community, is to take care of our wives and our daughters. And when a man's absent, when he's at work, he should be able to feel confident that someone else is not violating that trust that I feel has been violated. You had an opportunity to let two people go that would have kept our city safer, and now, we're going to come in and we're going to cover it up? I'm not okay with that. If you need directions and, and if you need, someone else offered some counsel for you on, on, they said that you needed counseling on, on law enforcement, if you need counseling on firing people, I'm good at it, come hire me for that, I'll fire them, because I'm good on manager. And when I get to the point of wanting to fire someone, I want them gone, because they're making my life and my job and other employees around them, making their lives miserable. When my wife comes home from work and she's in tears and she's sobbing, trust me, ma'am, you're not my favorite person. I'm frustrated with this community, it is four days before Christmas, and we have homeless people, people are dying from COVID, and you all are worried about covering up this, and you're worried about giving her a severance package, where was your mercy with the last city manager? Sir, where was your mercy with him? You had none, you kicked him out that day, but yet you get a golden parachute? You don't even deserve to be sitting in that seat. We need to have someone in there that can make tough decisions and not get walked all over, and I feel like you've been walked all over. I wanna stay for this, but I feel like you guys have already made your decision, because every decision you've had that's been easy, that would benefit this community, you've made poor ones, terrible decisions, simple decisions that would have been easy.
Mayor, council members, this evening, you will be considering appointing Vanessa Portillo as your permanent city manager, and it's imperative that I share the following. Mrs. Portillo doesn't have the capacity or the knowledge on how to run the city of Livingston. She has served as a finance director for two years and has not accumulated the executive management necessary to execute this position. You need to look at the opportunity costs that will be lost by not having someone that is at least, has at least five years of experience in this capacity. Given the highest executive position to the city, to someone who presented an interim, who was presenting an interim city manager contract laced with 25 typos, this shows carelessness. Mrs. Portillo was going to pay the city attorney for work that he did for the city of Livingston if it weren't for council member Moran that caught the mistake, also shows carelessness. You are giving this contract to someone who only cares about you and a handful of employees. It is said that seven or eight employees pleaded with her about intimidation, retaliation, and harassment by other employees, who you, you four know very well, with someone, some employees even crying, and she was very indifferent. This is the same person who didn't have the courage to look, to look at Chief Marco in the eye and tell him he's, that he was being placed on administrative leave, and did it in a cowardly way by calling him on the phone and not even giving him a reason. Mrs. Portillo has clearly demonstrated that she can't handle the job. She farmed out the public works duties, she hired a consultant to help her in the finance department, she signed a very expensive contract with the sheriff's department in violation of the city ordinance, and hired at least two more finance staff. The word out in the street is that Mrs. Portillo does not return phone calls, emails, and projects are being delayed. A press release went out boasting about landing the eighth train, but was, was the city actually present when this vote took place? Was Mrs. Portillo there? No, and no, and you all know that. At the last meeting, they asked some questions related to the eighth train, and she couldn't even answer them. Arco, Munglo, and Yagi projects are all behind schedule. I would like to caution council and mayor on making Mrs. Portillo a permanent city manager for these reasons, and all the other reasons that the other speakers have said before me. You want to make her a city manager, and to top that off, you're going to pay her a salary that is meant for someone who has many years of experience. What am I missing here? How is this in the best interest of our city? You don't care about the community, you care about your own personal agendas. Thank you for your time.
Good evening, council, with all respect, I come here very respectful. I just want you guys know, to know that the person that knows the crime, it's also considered a person that's doing the crime. I was here back in May, June, I've been here about two, three times, and I've been here because council member Soto has mentioned me on public council meetings, which I did not appreciate it. She talked about my organization, and how she was concerned about liability with lights, where she pretended that she didn't know who I was, but then she's, you know, she saw I was soccer organization. She addressed again and showed her concerns, that were, in June, I mentioned this to you guys, that I felt that she would, this was a personal thing against me or my organization. More than three times, I have invited all of you guys to reach out to me, to see how you could support to the community, I have not received anything, Jose Moran has, and I, I will say, Mr. Garcia has reached out to me, too. Ms. Soto worries about her needs, why? You put on Facebook what all members do in the city, the funny thing is, what you, the funny thing you say is you help the youth, but you help your youth, not all the youth, because you never bothered to help us. You haven't even bothered to call me or ask me, hey Anna, let's see how we could do and help you, the same way you helped your youth, your organization. Quote, "I have nothing against football, I have soccer players that have gone to football, I respect football, I think it's a good sport, it has nothing to do with that sport." Every person that was supporting our soccer organization, that Mrs. Soto questioned on public meeting was either put on the spot, and then eventually, guess what, was let go or quit. That's kinda a question for me on, you know, mister attorney, I just want you to listen really careful what I'm saying, because I'll have a question at the end. I talked to Mrs. Portillo about this retaliation, discrimination that was going on with me, and she stated that she saw that was going to my organization, to me, and, and to my treasurer, we had a meeting, and she would look into it. August, Mrs. Portillo offered to support us as much as she could, and she stated that, that there was a policy that she could waive fees, she could get, she override it, to send an email with our nonprofit and requesting fees to be waived. She mentioned, she was gonna look into it. The weird thing is, Soto gets in, she gets her way fees, including, and she changes the percentage on who could be here, but Mrs. Portillo... But Mrs. Portillo decides to never respond back to me. Several times, I emailed Mrs. Portillo and she has never responded back to me. Until I called Monica and I tell her to tell Mrs. Portillo that if she does not respond to me by tomorrow, I was going to say this in public meeting. Mrs. Portillo basically sent me an email stating that she was, again, she was, they were working on the lights. But the funny thing, I want to end with this. She said, "We are not contemplating the option of lending the city equipment with non-city events for insurance liability issues. My concern is this Mr. Attorney." Those were exactly the same words Mrs. Soto said about the lights when I questioned it. And my name was put on a public meeting regent me. So my question is respectfully to all council is, I feel, this is how I feel, and I want you to be very close, pay close attention. I feel retaliated against my organization. I feel there's a personal matter against my organization. I feel that I've caused, you guys caused, she, if she is retaliating against my organization, there's a big hardship going on because kids are not playing soccer on my organization because we don't have parks, because we don't have lights right now where to play. I asked her where to go. She never answered me back. So I want to know if you guys are going to, I'm going to end with this. If you are going to appoint a city manager for indefinite reason, a definite time or whatever time you're going to do it, how are you going to put that when she's not even able to resolve? And she knows what's going on to my organization. I questioned it and she bothered to not answer me until I actually told her I was going to bring it up in the meeting. This is, and the last thing is this. I need to know what you guys, I want to give you guys all the opportunity one more time to get back to me. And if not, how am I going to pursue from now on? Because I am not going to keep on coming back and forth. I am not a person that's going to come back and forth talking to you guys how I'm being retaliated against my organization because I decided to open my mouth and to say what you questioned me on a public meeting. So I just came and questioned you, but I was more respectful. I came to your face, not in back of your back.
Thank you, Ms. Anna, for your comment. However, back when I questioned, that was posed to our previous city manager, Jose Ramirez, in regards to the policy and using the city lights and equipment because that was an issue that had been pointed out to me from a citizen. So I directed that question to our previous city manager, which he... I didn't get a complete answer from him in regards to the waving of lights. That was for the Livingston Youth Football, in which I am a part of. However, I am not against soccer. I'm not against your organization, nor Mr. Sorias, nor anybody that competes here in Livingston. But the item that you're talking about was brought before the rec commission for the percentages to be dropped. Now that was an item at a special meeting that took place last Thursday, the last Thursday of the month. And it's been an agenda item and it has, and it'll come before us again. So I spoke on that twice before. And it wasn't my item that I brought. And it was nothing that I chose to lessen from 75% to 51%. That can be addressed through, and again, that's a public, that is something that, I can't remember what the rec department did. But again, those items were brought to the previous city manager and came from the rec department.
Ms. Soto, you did address it yourself. You did question it on a public meeting where you questioned the percentage. I'm sorry.
Yes. Just have a conversation with her. I think we best, we've scheduled a meeting and you guys have a discussion. No, sorry. We have to move on or else everybody has to get a second chance.
Mayor, it's fine.
What was that?
That's fine.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
So you did question the percentage before even the rec. The rec, I think, was concerned about the fees. Where I even spoke to the rec and I said, "I agree" because I understand what they were coming from, the hardship. But you did question it on that meeting when you questioned the lights. But you could have questioned the lights without saying my name specifically and why those things were. You had the opportunity to contact me when I emailed you personally and you decided to bring it on a public meeting instead of reaching out to me by email.
I apologize. I didn't receive an email from you. We can go back.
Okay, we're going to move on. You guys could have a conversation or have a meeting later on.
Again, you can reach out to me. We can meet up after.
Any other citizen comments? I think there was somebody on the phone.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Honorable Mayor.
Hold on. I think there's somebody on the phone. Is there issues with the volume?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, barely. Barely, yeah.
Hello?
No, still not good.
Hello?
No, it's barely. Go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Barely, but just, let's try, let's try to hear. Go ahead.
As Honorable Mayor, Mayor Potem and City Council Members, my name is Ruth Cordova. I'm a retired deputy with the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. And I come before this council and the people of the city of Livingston to protect the integrity of Merced County Sheriff's Office and specifically our leadership with the Sheriff, Warren Key. Now listen, I fully support the city manager in entering into an agreement with the sheriff. That agreement is to protect the life and safety of the people. The sheriff made an oath to office and to the United States Constitution to protect the life and safety of the people, like it or not. Since Proposition 47, 57, and Navy 109, there has been a rise in crime. There's been a rise in calls for service. The sheriff did not state that this agreement was going to be forever, but he did state that it was going to be in the interim until the city council had hired a chief of police. I had heard constituent comments, "Well, I'll do the job." "Well, I'm sorry, sir. You don't have powers of arrest." Okay? The city manager or other citizens don't have powers of arrest. And then there imposes a liability issue. The first and foremost important topic and issue within the entire city is public safety, bottom line. You're not going to be drinking any water if you're a victim of a crime, particularly of a homicide. Okay? Lastly, I thank this council. I thank the city manager for entering into that agreement. I thank our leadership. I thank Sheriff Warren Key. I fully support everybody. Lastly, I'd like to thank our heroes that put on the uniform every day to put an impact on crime and protect the life and safety of us all. And I also thank our servicemen. My name is Ruth Cordova. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. For the most part, yes. So she was basically giving support in regards to decision-making, in regards to the sheriff's department, thanking the officers. She, her name is, I forgot her name too. Ruth Cordova. So basically providing support in regards to our decision as a council, as a body, a decision of Vanessa's with going ahead with the contract with the sheriff's department, providing police services. And that was pretty much it. It was just providing support in general. Go ahead.
Good evening, council, mayor. I'd like to start off by reminding or making those who are not aware known that there is a current mask mandate in the state of California in effect until the date of January 20th, or I'm sorry, 15th, 2022. So it would be very great if all of our council members, including Maria Soto, would comply with the mandate in order to protect our community and each other. I'd like to go on to mention or to touch on a conversation that I had had personally with a couple of council members in regards to the city attorney. And in that conversation, I mentioned that the lack of decorum and respect that he shows for the citizens is completely unacceptable. To this day, he has continued to be disrespectful, as we saw tonight. You can raise your eyebrows at me all you'd like. Doesn't bother me. He's continued to be disrespectful, openly mocking not only our citizens, but the citizens of surrounding communities. I was told that if he doesn't work out, he's gone. Those were your exact words. And yet, here we are, six months later, seven months later, whatever it's been, and nothing has changed from this individual. He continues to cause a hostile environment in our meetings with his lack of respect for our community. And really, it's come to the point where we, as a community, have started to question, where does his allegiance lie? Clearly not with the community. And that's evident in the contract that his firm, him, whoever, drafted between the city and Mrs. Portillo. There are no safeguards in that contract for the city. Yet he is the person who is in charge of protecting our city from any liability that should come. And yet, there are no safeguards in that contract. I would like to formally ask this council to evaluate the contract that we have with this firm because it is not a good fit. Despite what he has done, what context he's drawn up, what work he's done, he is not a good fit for our community. And that was evident here tonight and many other nights that we've been here. Thank you.
Mayor and council, citizens. Let's just talk about tonight first. People got up and said that I was responsible for doing something that I didn't do. I pointed that out. That's not being disrespectful. When somebody else was walking up to the microphone and made a snide comment about our work in Turlock and I gave the facts about that, when I corrected him, that is not being disrespectful. I am not required to just let people run all over me and say nothing and if I do, be considered disrespectful. That's ridiculous. And I'm going to say, like I said, and when, the first time you guys got mad at me because I told you, you can't make this the Jerry Springer Show. You just wanted to come up here and scream. And you know what? That's finally stopped, thank God. But you guys came up here and yelled and screamed like maniacs and hated me for saying that this is a place for...
Can I take the rest of my time, please? I had time remaining. I had 25 seconds left. Can I use that now?
Go ahead.
In the past, we have been told that this is not a back and forth discussion by the city attorney. So we would appreciate it if you would respect our citizen comment time and keep your comments to yourself as well. This is not a back and forth discussion, just like you said. And I really don't care what people out in the audience had to say that you feel like you've been disrespected. Nobody has been disrespectful. You have been the most disrespectful person in this room for months. So just like you told us, this is not a back and forth discussion, please, keep your comments to yourself. This is not a back and forth discussion.
No, no. I'm not going to be a punching bag up here. Period.
So I have a right to respond.
Come on, everybody, please.
So unless I'm standing here and start the clock and announce that I'm about to make a comment, what I say to a private citizen, that's not his concern. I could be talking about anything. He has no right, your attorney, to disrespect a citizen for having a private conversation with a private citizen. That is wrong. I hope that you accept that. Mr. Helen, I have respected you. Tell me when I have disrespect. I have not. I had nothing but respect for you. But you have no right in hell to make comments regarding to me when I'm talking to a citizen on private conversation. That's not a public comment. If I'm standing here, respond as you wish. I'm a big man. I can take it. Mr. Mayor, I'm not the only one that has told you. Thousands, hundreds of people have told you that you need to control this attorney and to only speak when he's been given permission or asked or requested by the council. That's how it's supposed to work. The mayor is supposed to control, not the attorney. He has no right to disrespect. He works for us. We do not work for him. We do not put up with this bullshit. I'm sorry. We do not put up with this bullshit.
Okay, good problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that's it. That's it. Let's go.
I'm sorry.
Is that a trick?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Samra? Mr. Samra?
No, no. Let's go. Let's move on. We're moving on to other comments. Maria?
Tell me how the attorney is good.
That is not my comment. Okay? When you address the council, you address our mayor. Again, now you've taken the heart to say that, "Mayor, this is your council to run. This is your meeting to run."
Ms. Soto, what I said, I said...
I'm sorry. You just interrupted me.
Okay, go ahead.
You afforded him that gracious opportunity to say, "This is your meeting." However, 20 minutes ago, you pointed your finger at him and demanded that he put into words something for our attorney.
And I still stand by that comment.
I'm sorry. I'm still talking.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
The decorum in this room is... Again, I don't want to take any more time, but I just want to be able to say that we need to be calm and move on to business. Move on to business. We're at 8:07. 8:07. And we're bickering about who gets to say what, how they say it, when they say it. So again, this is your second time to the lectern. I appreciate citizens coming forward and making their comments. However, I do not like to be bullied. I don't like to see anything up here that resembles any of us being told what we need to say. Thank you.
Ms. Soto, with all due respect to you, when I came to speak on a citizen comment, my intent and questions were, "Mr. Mayor, will you allow item four to be held for public comment? And are you going to allow public comment on item number seven?" That was the entire reason for coming up with my citizen comment. However, however, I was totally disrespected by the attorney and you've heard from others. Others feel the same way. And all I said, "Mr. Mayor, we are citizens of this Livingston. We have the right to be respected. Please advise the attorney. Please tell him that he cannot be disrespecting the people." I felt very disrespected. If I was sitting in that seat, that attorney would have been, had a chat in the back room by now. It says, "You do not speak. I will ask you to speak." With our previous attorney, if you recall, Mr. Sanchez and others, they always said, "Mr. Mayor, do you wish to have any time?" It was never bullied the citizens. It was never bullying the citizens. This is exactly what this is, bullying the citizens. And Mr. Mayor, I stand by my comment. Please have the attorney refrain from disrespecting people.
Okay, good problem. Thank you.
You may say that about me, but you can't say about others. Others have said the same thing. So please, respect the people.
Thank you, sir.
Respect the people. Hold it to bring the temperature down. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're moving on. Any other citizen comments on the phone? Go ahead.
All right.
All right, hello, everyone. First of all, I do have a question for the lawyer. Well, I have a couple, actually. When somebody speaks in a language other than English, is that not supposed to be translated for everyone to understand?
If somebody gives notice before the meeting that they need a translator, sometimes one's provided.
All right, I wanna give notice that at every meeting, if somebody speaks a language other than English, it should be translated for everyone to understand. I'm giving notice now. Is that sufficient?
That's, I believe that request is too broad. I'd have to go back and look at the particulars, but I think that's too burdensome on the city to expect to be able to have every language interpreted.
Okay, let me just tell you that Spanish and Punjabi probably is the ones that are needed here. Not every language. The other, I do, and I wanna be respectful to you, and I hope that you are respectful to all of us as well. I do agree with, with some of the comments that in the past, I do remember the lawyer asking if he could speak before he spoke, unless he was being talked to directly. But I do have a question for you, because you, we're bringing all this up now. Do you currently have any pending lawsuits against you, personal lawsuits from any other city?
No.
Does it no?
No.
Okay, thank you. So now I'm gonna go to the, to the part here. So right now, you're doing a new contract with the city manager that can, that in order to remove her, four people, it has to be four to one. How, and also, it's not simple majority like it used to be. It used to be four-year contract, now it's forever, for eternity, and then severance package, does it total up to 13 months? If you gotta give her six months' notice, plus pay her six months' severance, and you have to give her 30 days. That's the exact same contract that you had for Jose Antonio, right?
That items under actually are, are calendar, are, are under discussion.
Okay, we'll go with that. Thank you. We'll do that one later then. Thanks. The, is that the same for the, the chief?
Yes.
So what about creating, are you also doing that for creating or hiring the CPS law firm? Is that gonna be talked about also?
It's under consent calendar.
So, unless somebody pulls it, so
Yes.
So we're gonna pay $38,000 to hire, to, to hire them, so they can interview a police chief and a public utilities director. Now, what is the difference between public utilities director and public works director? And also, this is a question for the lawyer. Can employ, and I'm going a little bit over, because can employees get raises and promotions if they have a bad record?
Theoretically, they could, yeah.
Okay, so erasing their file is not a way that they can just easily get promoted and/or get racist by erasing their file? And, and how does that compare to other cities, erasing the files?
I, I'm not sure what erasing the files-
Erasing their personnel files, their bad record, their, whatever they've done wrong at work. I think I have to put it in.
Oh. I mean, if you're, anything can be done. It's whether the, it's a, you know, the, the practice or not, but I mean practically speaking, you, you have progressive discipline.
Okay, now I have two more questions. Mr. Mayor, you said in the past, in one of the past council meetings, that there was going to be recruitment for the chief, to get a new chief. What happened to that? What happened to that recruitment process?
So that's what item number three is about. That's, we're using the firm to begin the recruiting process and application process.
And then, the last question is, why do city elected officials have to communicate via citizens' comments, like the supervisor Rodrigo? And Catherine Shell, that one's even worse, because she is an elected official for our city, and can the lawyer tell me what her elected office is and what is her duties?
She's a city treasurer.
All right, what's her duty? What is a treasurer, what does a treasurer do for this city?
There's three, you know, she basically, it's basically a figurehead position.
What does that mean, figurehead position? I'm not a-
She signs off on things, but she doesn't do the daily work on them.
To sign off on them, she needs to have the information, right? Or she just, you just have her just sign, sign, sign?
I don't have her do anything.
Well, I'm asking the, the city. Does the city do that? The reason I'm asking is why does-
She works in conjunction with the finance department to review the report, financial reports.
So she does not have to request for documents via the normal, whatever, whatever a citizen, like if I wanted to get financial information, like-
No, she does not have to make public records requests for certain, certain things. Well, it's for certain things, I said, and I don't know any particular, and now is not the time to go over what they are. It's 8:15.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just asking, because I'm just, why, and also, I don't know why we don't have Rodrigo, his normal report as well. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, so I'm not saying that we're done with public comments, and I don't know if we're done with public comments, but I just wanna refer to the comment that you just made, Mr. Helenin, in regards to saying like, this is not the time for those questions. So when, isn't that what public comments are for? So the residents and citizens can come to our meetings and ask questions if they have.
When you have questions like that, you're supposed to contact the staff and meet them outside of this meeting, so you don't waste time with all this back and forth, and people don't know, you know, have to go look. I mean, that's, that's why it's just a, when you do it here, it's just a show. If you really wanna get information, then you do it outside of a council meeting.
So, I, well, this is just my opinion, but I also look at it as informative, and it's a, and it's a way for people to learn and learn what the process is. Because I, you know, obviously, even, even for myself, as a new council member, I'm still learning. There, there are a lot of things that I need to learn, so this is one of the best ways for me to learn on, on procedures. So, I would appreciate if, that is just my opinion. I, I do respect and I do believe in people's right to comment, and they can use those three minutes as they please, as long as they are respectful and they, they provide, they're asking questions. Thank you.
Julio, you already had your time, man.
I just wanna say, I'm not here for show. If you're telling me I'm here for show, I really wanna know. And sometimes, I'm gonna tell you that if I ever need stuff from, that, documents that pertain to the city, I go to Catherine Shell, 'cause she can get to me faster, and the city takes forever, or doesn't get him at all. That's why we come here.
Mayor?
Go ahead, Vanessa.
If I may, the city, the city, the city on their website, they have, we have posted the job descriptions, and included with that, with those job descriptions are the job descriptions for the elected officials, city clerks, city treasurer, if the public would like to pull it up and, and, and educate or read about the position.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Want to do citizen comment?
I just want one minute to respond.
Go ahead.
Okay, Catherine Shell Rodriguez, yes, it does look like I have to fill out public document requests for certain items. For example, the city attorney's invoices, I have been getting redacted copies. In other words, even as an elected official, I don't get access to the same kinds of copies that people on the council might be able to get. They've been, they've had quite heavy redactions. And secondly, when I asked about the most recent invoice, I was asked if I was going to get, do a public document request, an official public document request in order to get the invoice that the managing partner of the firm had already promised that I should be able to get easily. And I also do want to report that we get billed for public document requests, even if they are made for or by other members of this community.
Good evening. Okay, so I'm just the messenger for Dave Levens, 'cause he had to go to work, and he didn't make the deadline for that email. So on behalf of him, sorry I could not be in attendance tonight due to work, but I have something to say about tonight's agenda. I'm urging the council to vote no on all three of the items on tonight's agenda. None of them are in the best interest of the people you represent, unless you have a very good explanation about what is going on, vote no. Turning over control of the police department to the county is a horrible idea. We get the scraps that the county gives us, and the price is too steep. Mrs. Portillo has not shown that she is capable of handling the job, and you guys are handing it to her. At the sever, and the severance package proposed is an insult to the city and looks like a payoff for doing the council's bidding. And it flat-out stinks. Up to the point, as she has shown, is she can say yes to whatever council instructs her to do. I'm told she is a strong, she has a strong financial background. Did she negotiate the contract with the sheriff's department? If she did, I have to question that, because I believe we paid too much and entered into a huge contract without the proper input from the public. Both of these lead me to question her judgment and qualifications for the job you are handing her. This council should be embarrassed. That's Dave, David, not me. You, you are signing contracts that are digging this city a financial hole that will take the citizens' years to recover from. Dave Levens. And then, we've been having a slight, on my behalf, we've been having a slight issue with stealing different things from the corner trees. Somebody stole the cars off somebody's tree, and I had a couple items stolen. And then there was somebody, I think on Friday or Thursday, that was going up and down the street stealing, and also on Saturday, they went up and down on Ninth Street, stealing people's things out of their car. For example, like I give, I help people, like somebody requested a jacket, and they happened to, they stole like all the jackets that I had for this person, because she was cold. So if, I don't know anything about patrolling or that, but could you maybe come up with an idea, resolution, or sort of things as a committee, don't keep getting stolen, 'cause it's been, it's like a big issue now. As we get closer to Christmas, it's, it's becoming more apparent. Thank you.
Thank you. Monica, you had?
Where's Monica?
Did you have emails?
I have two emails regarding item seven. Do you want me to read them now?
No, we'll wait for item, wait for the item. Thank you. Any other citizen comments?
Good evening, council. My name is Dwight Larks. I'm a former resident of the city of Livingston. I was raised here for the most part. In fact, this chamber here used to be my home. My house was right here before this was built. I just wanna say that I'm, I'm, I'm watching the way the city is performing, and I think the city is performing like a, like a Super Bowl game. You've got, you're making decisions. When something fails, you're quickly recovering and making another decision. Bills are being paid. There's police, high, high-quality police force by the sheriff's department here, because the past chief didn't work out for whatever reason. I don't know. So we do have police. We have a potential new city manager that is willing to step up and deal with, with a lot of the riffraff that goes on at public comment. And we have an incredible city attorney who everyone's trying to beat down enough to have him quit. Looks like he's a pretty tough individual. I don't think he's gonna do that. So, I just wanna say from my experience, I worked in the city of Atwater, doing their cannabis policy reform, about two and a half years before this city attorney showed up. Myself, Scott McBride, a couple other attorneys, worked feverishly to try to get the city of Atwater on their feet in regards to cannabis. We thought we had a good cannabis policy in place, and then this law firm showed up with different experience, and within, I don't know how many months, the city was generating revenue off of that industry. So, I didn't like the way this law firm worked on their cannabis ordinance, but I didn't have to, because it worked. So, I don't have to like everything about everybody, but I do think that this council is being disrespected, so that you'll leave. They're, they're pushing and pulling on you, so that you'll, you'll make mistakes, and you'll get into a tit-for-tat with them. And so, from my point of view, watching from afar, 'cause I don't live here at the moment, I think you guys are just executing, 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 play after play for the benefit of the city, and I'd like to see that continue. I've met with Ms. Portillo, and I think she's incredibly qualified. I think that she has a lot of background with the city and saw a lot of the way things were being done, and I think she can improve on those. So I'm in favor of voting for this new city manager and voting for a protective contract that will protect her employment and the city of Livingston. So, keep moving forward. Great job, guys.
Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to announcements and reports. City staff announcements and reports?
Mayor, Public Works Department has a report tonight.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tony Abina, Public Works Superintendent. Just a few projects we've been dealing here with, in the city of Livingston, ongoing projects and a couple completed. We recently did some work on some fading stop bars and center lines, areas that were really faded in certain areas, and we're trying to hit them before the fog.
Tony?
Oh, here we go.
I'm sorry, Tony, I'm sorry. Can you please come to the lectern? We can, so, our- Thank you, Tony. That way our video, it's recorded.
Okay, so I left off here on the Measure V projects the city's been working on. There was a couple areas that had some center lines, stop bars, over in the area of Dwight Walnut. Areas that were just redone as well was the Olive Avenue that had a lot of construction here in the past year, so those were brightened up right before the, the bad weather came in. We have a lot of ongoing projects, as you guys drive around the city. We have the sewer projects moving forward. That one, unless it's raining, they're, they're moving and moving fast. The alley project, we were getting close to the end. We had two more alleys that needed to be paved, but the rain and the cold, cold weather set in, so as soon as we get some good weather, we'll be able to, that contractor should be able to finish those. We do have a couple light projects that we're working on at the sports complex and Joseph Gallo Park. We are on a standstill. We're waiting for metal, which is right now become a high commodity to get right now. But as soon as those light poles come in, everything else is ready to go, and those lights will be put up, and we'll have lights at both of those parks. Solar project, if you haven't seen, right behind the council chambers, the rock parking lot has the solar projects has started, and some of the metal has been erected. Over at the sports complex, they have also started, and as soon as they get about midway through that one there, they will start over in the area of the Joseph Gallo Park, and they'll start doing the solar and panels on that area. The wastewater treatment plant, we just had a meeting with Vanessa and the company that's be working on the wastewater treatment, solar panels. If everything goes good, that project could start as early as March 2022. So that's moving along, and if everything goes well, that'll be starting up. Staff has been working really hard on our storm lift stations. We did get We did get a lot of rain here in the past couple of weeks. We're prepping for another big storm coming up. One of our parks, which is Fred Warren Park, that does not have a lift station, we have been pumping out of that for the last couple of days into our, into MID canal. So with the new storm coming in, as soon as that happens again, it starts filling, we will continue to pump out of that park and into the canal. And just also, public, please be aware, we do have a couple other projects going on that are not city projects, but PG&E is still on a project over on C and Seventh. And they do have a lot of signage, so be aware of that project. There is also a PG&E project on a gas line over in the B Street area in front of the Sikh temple. So that's maybe also got a little slowed down because they had some problems with the rain. But they are still moving forward and they've made that area safe. So that's pretty much my report. Any questions?
Council, any questions? No, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks for all the work you guys are doing and we could see it on a daily basis. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vanessa, any other staff reports?
No, staff reports.
Okay. And then, so we go on to city manager announcements and reports?
Mayor, city council members, I do have an announcement. I will be working with the Merced County Health Department. They are looking into bringing some vaccination and testing clinics to Livingston to have one. They've been doing mobile clinics around each one of the cities in the county. So they have reached out and looked into the potential of setting something here at the city of Livingston and will be working towards that. They're looking into the next couple of weeks to bring that over. That's all.
Council, any questions for Vanessa? Okay, we're going to move on to city council members' announcements and reports. Councilmember King?
First of all, I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years. On December 10th, I participated in the Christmas parade we had. And on December 14th, attended the mosquito baby meeting. That's it.
Councilmember Josemora?
Yes, thank you. Well, first of all, I need to, I had a text from a resident that the video is not up on YouTube. I'm sorry? So it is being recorded and it will be uploaded afterwards? Okay, so. I would suggest, just a recommendation, like when this happens, just to let us know. That way. Okay, so, all right. So just to make sure that, anyways, I just wanted to double check on that. Thank you. Not much to report other than I did, I did, I was able to see some of the videos from people live streaming the parade. Unfortunately, I was not able to physically be there, but was very supportive from far, watching it at home and resting after a previous back surgery. But congratulations to the recreation department for organizing and for the residents for participating in this great event. I think they had a total of 52 or so floats, which is great. I did see a lot of involvement compared to previous years. So congratulations and great job. And other than that, there wasn't much, much to report from, from being resting for two weeks. But working on a few more things and I can report at the next meeting. Thank you.
Councilmember Maria Soto?
On December 8th, I participated in a county, a city and county challenge. It was called the Merced Jam. It was a horse challenge between Mayor of Merced, Matt Sorato, and District Supervisor, Joss Pedrosa. I represented very well. Also a participant in the December 10th parade in downtown Livingston. Congratulations to the city of Livingston and the recreation department for hosting such a big and festive event. We had, December 11th, the VFW held a Christmas dinner. Students that entered into the scholarships that were available through the high school and the middle school, we received some entries. We also gave out some awards and certificates to, to the local schools and surrounding parochial school in Atwater. And those are events that tap, that are available to non-members of the VFW. So when those events come up again, there are scholarship opportunities for the students in our community. They also gathered letters and canned food drives. On December 15th, the Livingston Lions Club presented a former, well, a young, former Miss Independence Court with a scholarship of $1,000 as she still is, she's attending Stanford. And on December 16th, I attended the MCA G board meeting. Thank you.
Maria, you want to answer a question?
So I'm hearing that you're involved in a lot of scholarships or you, you know, you, you attended some, where they gave some scholarships. I was wondering that if you're involved so much in that, can you look into, there's people that maybe people don't know, but like me, myself, that homeschool students. My kid got a scholarship that maybe for kids that not necessarily attend a public school, but they're really good students where they're attending college right now and they're being homeschooled that have opportunity maybe to, to receive scholarships, like the one you're attending? I don't know if it's something you could look into?
That award was given by the Livingston Lions Club.
Right, but what I'm trying to say is can you look into like referring, where people can look into information for scholarships for homeschool students?
I will do my best to look into it.
Councilmember Josemora, did you have an additional?
Yes, thank you. And sorry, I forgot. On Thursday, so right before Christmas Eve and then Christmas, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we will be distributing those home kits for COVID testing at the empty lot across from the park where we used to do the food distribution. We will have enough, last time we distributed, I believe it was 400 kits to 400 families in Livingston, 400 families. And we will be having more, another distribution on Thursday, this Thursday from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. And they're free, no questions asked. The only thing we ask for is a zip code. That's it, you know? And if you have family members that cannot physically come and pick them up, just let us know and we will give you enough for those at home. It will be this Thursday, 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, across the street, behind the park and behind the museum. Thank you.
Mayor President Garcia?
Good evening. The following statement is on behalf of your Vice Mayor of the city of Livingston. So at the beginning of citizens' comments, obviously you guys, I said we need to be respectful to one another as we're up here. I mean, if you guys are at the podium there, we're up here. We all have to be respectful. That's very important. What happened tonight is unfortunately a great example of us being, I say us because we all live here together. We're up here, you're down there. We all have to be respectful. And the former mayor that stated that I hate people, I do not hate anyone here in the city of Livingston or anyone in general. I do not hate anyone. That is, that word, it's very bad. And he also did not reach out to me. I have my city phone. I didn't have a missed call. So, thank you. So once again, we as a council up here, the attorney city manager, we do not have to answer questions when people come up to citizens' comments. You know, we, we do not. If this is going to get out of hand, I'm recommending that us as a council look back into that. I mean, it states it here under our citizens' comments. We do not need to take any action. If it's going to get this heated in here, us being disrespectful to one another, we need to go back to that. Feel free to, like I said, you guys, my cellphone, you leave a message at City Hall. I usually will respond after 1900, or excuse me, 7:00 PM, after I get out of work. I'll be calling you back, 7:30 we'll call it. My number's 209-398-9108. Or you can call the city, leave a message with Monica. She'll get that to me and I will call you back. That's for sure. Thursdays and Fridays are usually my days off, so I'll probably call you after 10 o'clock if you do call me, leave a message. And I'll, and I'll be willing to meet up with you guys on whatever issues. Like I said, I don't have anything against anyone. I'm here for you guys. And to see, sometimes you guys may disagree with our votes, our statements or whatnot, but I mean, we'll try to get, work through that. So thank you for your time and have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. In regards to my announcements and reports, obviously attended the parade. Great job with the recreation department, you know, successful event. One thing about the parade that I really advocated for the past few years is to be fair for the, for, for the whole community. I know it's been, you know, taking place at a certain specific area in town, which is not fair for the whole town, for the other side of the town. So I know I have advocated for the past few years either bring it back to Main Street where everybody could access the parade or, you know, take turns this side of town, the other side of town, just for it to be fair and everybody had an opportunity to really see the parade firsthand. That's something I've talked about. Regardless, it was a good event. I wasn't able to make the, able to go to the MCA G meeting due to my job, but thank you, Maria, for stepping in as the alternate. I appreciate it. Same thing as our Mayor President was saying. I didn't want to continue commenting, going back and forth with every single one of you during citizen comments or sorry, further argument or further disagreements. So I waited to give my report or my, my comments right now. It is very unfortunate, very unprofessional. I mean, I worked with all of you guys in one capacity or another. And in regards to being attacked and bullied up here, meeting after meeting, when we're, I could tell you from, straight from my heart, we're trying to do our best to make the best decisions for the city with what we have. You know, I've been here for all my whole life and I've been involved in the city forever in one capacity or another. You know, it is very, you know, very heartbreaking for the tax Vanessa's receiving and, and all of that. She's been doing the job for the past several months already with herself as the, you know, not only as a city manager, but as the department head for several departments. She constantly, constantly communication with us. One thing that I really, you know, I'll talk more about it on the contract, but it's just heartbreaking to see the people not even giving her an opportunity or judging her just based on nothing because, I mean, we get to actually work with her on a regular basis and I could back her 110%. I know continually people saying about the contract with the sheriff's department, they're not taking over the city of Livingston. We said it millions of times. They're just providing support, like any community, any family, any community is, you know, helping each other out and they're here to provide that support temporarily as soon as possible. And I don't think, none of us ever said that they were going to come and take over. As a matter of fact, it wasn't even our, you know, direct decision. But regardless, like I said, we appreciated people coming forth and expressing their, you know, their concerns. And, but we really need to, you know, respect each other, not only you guys out there, but also, you know, out here. And yeah, we do need to, you know, control ourselves and be respectful and that goes for the council and attorney and our city manager. This is very unfortunate to see the things that happen during citizen comments and I hope we can move forward and work with each other. You know, it might, like you guys said, it might not like our decision or our vote, but we are, you know, trying to do this in the best interest of our city and we have the best, best hope for Vanessa and for hopefully we get a new city police chief as soon as possible. The city runs as best as we hope for, you know, everything's running 100% or as best as it could. But we all need to work together. We need to, you know, it's a small town, small community. You know, you guys, we're here for many, many years, you know, making decisions and, and all of that. But you know, now we're, you know, we're up here, we're trying to make the best we can and considering everything we have going, we have a lot of things going that we need to start working together. So hopefully we can start healing and moving forward. So with that, we're going to go move on.
Can I, I forgot something, can I mention something?
Go ahead.
On this, I'm not calling anyone out or anything, but I know there's someone said that, how about if I remember correctly, not having our city like treasurer or city clerk? You know, maybe that's a good idea. It's up to them. I know I brought it up in the past and I don't know what happened or what not, but they're here today. If they're willing to have their names placed on the agenda, I mean, that would be great. I mean, there's citizens out there that would probably ask them questions that, I mean, that they know and they can get directly, direct to them, right? Where it then and there. So I'm not sure they're here tonight. Maybe they want to say something. And I think it's, like I said, they're your elected officials also and it's a very important role for the city.
So I know that you've asked this question a few times already. And as you may know, I am on maternity leave, so I'm not going to speak a lot on it because it's not my role right now. But what exactly are you looking for when you want to put me on the agenda? What type of report are you wanting me to do?
No, no, I'm not saying put you on. I say if you guys are, I mean, want to put yourself on.
You've requested that before. So I'm just wondering exactly what type of report are you looking for? Do you know what I'm supposed to be doing? As a city clerk?
Well, I mean, if there's citizens out there that elected you.
Okay, but you're asking, so you answer my question. What exactly are you looking for?
This is what I'm going back to. I'm not going to argue here. That was just, it was brought up.
You brought it up?
Yes.
Twice.
I brought it up today. He has a second time.
No, this is the third time.
We're not going to go back and forth. Are you willing to put your name on here? That was my question.
I wanted to know first, what are you looking for? What exactly are you looking for?
Thank you.
You're not going to answer my question?
I think it'll be just an opportunity to, if you have something to report or share regarding your role.
I would, I would love to do that. I mean, I'm going to get unlimited time. That's wonderful for me. I'm just wondering why or what is it that we're looking for as far as the city clerk? Because as the city clerk, I, if you're requesting, and again, this is the third time you're requesting, I want to know exactly what are, oh my God, I forgot your title. Interim, no, you're not interim. Mayor President, exactly what he's looking for? Because he's consistently asking and I'm just trying to clarify and understand. But if you want to put me on the agenda to report out, that's fine with me. I mean, I love to have the unlimited time to speak and answer questions. Yeah. So do we want to have a conversation outside of the meeting to figure it out? Maybe you can answer my question then?
Yeah, we can do it on Thursday or not this, probably next week.
Well, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not working as a city clerk right now because I am on maternity leave, but we can definitely schedule something once I return.
Yes.
You can reach out to me.
I will reach out to you.
That'll be great.
I mean, if you want to, I don't know when you're coming back, so.
I'm coming back after March.
Okay, so I'll reach out to you after March.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sounds good. Okay. And then, sorry, another thing real quick I do want to mention. I know, obviously in the meetings, we get a lot of pushback. Like I said, you know, a lot of different opinions and thoughts and all that. But I also want to acknowledge, you know, those that do support us, that, you know, they do trust us and, and have the, know that we're here. We've been in our city for many, many years, for decades, grew up here, have our families here. And they do trust the process. So we do appreciate, you know, those people that are supporting us and reach out on a regular basis to let us know that. With that said, let's move on to consent agenda. Announcements on the consent claim are considered routine and non-conversational and will be enacted by one vote unless separate action is requested by the city manager or city council member. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless members of the city council or city manager request that specific items be removed. I know there were requests. Council, any requests to? Council, any requests to pull out any items or specific questions?
I'd like to, well, I do have some questions on item number three and number four. And I move to approve the consent agenda for item one, two, and five separately. And I'd like to separately discuss and approve or not items three and four.
And I would like to pull out item number five, have separate discussion as I have to remove myself from that level. So, we could go on with the first two items. Any motions?
I make a motion to approve consent agenda that includes only items one and two.
You have a motion?
Yeah, a second.
You have a second, Monica?
Motion approved by a vote of 5-0.
Thank you, Monica. So, go on to item number three.
Okay, I do have some questions on that particular item, which is item number three, approve contract with CPS HR. It's a resolution approving contract with CPS HR consulting to conduct executive recruitment services. I think this question would be directly, directed more to Vanessa. Normally, in the past, we have seen having different, different companies bidding for items like this. This is not the case, we only have one.
Councilmember Moran Mayer, I requested this recruitment quote from CPS HR. They are a specialized firm in conducting this executive level recruitment. I did note that as part of the city municipal code, there's an ordinance that permits that if we are hiring for specialized service, I can, I can, we are exempt of that bidding or quote process. So, that is a process that I followed. And also, it's, it is because of the urgency of this recruitment for me. I, we have been without a public services director for three months now and I really need a company that is capable, it's efficient, and it's known that will bring that recruitment forward and help me complete it.
Thank you, Vanessa, for that response. I still, well, I'm not arguing to what your, what current city ordinance is, but I'm just curious of, you know, compared to previous, for many years that I've been participating in council meetings, that has been normally the protocol. And because, so up to a certain point, we don't have a choice. I don't seem to, like, I have a choice. Well, actually, I do have a choice either to approve it or reject it. But other than that, you know, if, if we're basically just going with what is being presented and it's like, I personally don't know much about this company. I tried to search it up and I wasn't able to find much information about it. I tried, I reached out to, anyways, just research about it, but there wasn't much information other than their website. But obviously, anybody's website is gonna have what, you know, what they wanna have. And I was also looking at the contract. What happens if, is there like an initial payment? Is there, is there like half payment? What happens if we're not satisfied with what they, what they're doing? What happens if you're not satisfied? Because based on the contract, they can only contact you and stay in touch with you, but it doesn't say, or I don't even know if you would be able to, or the city manager would be able to get back to us and say, you know what? I don't think they're doing, I don't think they're performing as I expected. I don't think we should continue with this. There's not, none of that here. What would happen, what would happen if we're not happy, you're not happy with their performance so far?
They'll be in communication to ensure that the city will have quality candidates come forward for us to interview and to bring, bring to the council as far as presenting them with a contract for a public services or chief of police.
Yeah, that still doesn't answer my question, but.
Is your question, is basically?
My question is, can we cancel the service at any time and do we have to pay the full amount?
My understanding, they will bring a, they're committed to bringing a quality candidate, even though their timeline says that they will try to work with us as fast as possible within their four-week, 12-week period. If it doesn't work out, if we're not happy, this company will continue to post it until we get a quality candidate come to the city.
For the same amount?
It is part of their contract to find us a candidate.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Can I add on that, since we're on that topic, please? So, it does, I mean, it's a lot of money, right? However, the public, we wanna be transparent, you know? So, I think this is a great idea. I've heard comments of myself saying, hey, family members of mine wanna apply and they're gonna get the job, or I wanna be the chief of police. No, that's, I do not. It's not my time to, so like I said, I think it's a great idea. So, people are out there saying that we're putting our family members in these positions. So, let this firm handle all of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? We'll check it out for any public comment at this time?
Catherine Shell Rodriguez, and I did read the staff report. And it stated that we were having, we are hiring an executive search firm because it's difficult to find qualified candidates who want to work for the city of Livingston. My question about that part is, what was wrong with the candidates that did apply? What were they lacking? And then, more specifically for the police chief position, will there still be a technical review board made up of members of law enforcement to interview these candidates? Or will that be eliminated? And will there still be a community review panel made up of members of the community to interview police chief candidates? Or will that be eliminated as well? And finally, if a hiring decision is made, will the contract come before the council in open session for ratification?
My understanding, it's that the contract would normally come to the council for ratification once that decision is made. And as far as the other questions, mayor, councilmembers, the, we listed the recruitment for the vacant position for Public Services Department back in mid-September when the position title was approved and we didn't have any, any success with that recruitment. So, we, we have, we have halted, well, we don't have any applications to review to begin with. So, that is one of the reasons why we are moving forward with an executive recruitment firm in order to, in order to have that capacity of the outreach that they have in the different platforms to have this candidates come forward and make our city a potential employer that it's attractive to candidates out there that are qualified. In regards to the citizens panel and the basic, the basic review of the applications and the, and the skill per se for the, for any of these positions, it's done at the, at the executive recruitment firm level. And just to share that many of this, many of the, many of the people, the consultants that work in this executive firm are previous retiree chiefs or previous city managers. It's just, they know what the cities are looking for in order to bring that forward. So, normally, when, when a city is looking for a police, with a police chief recruitment, they would normally have someone that has past experience in public safety do this. They will, it will be assigned to that, conducting of that review and of the applicants and the information that it's, that comes forward. As far as the citizens panel, we can explore that in the future once we have, once we get to the getting applicants stage.
Yes, experts may know what goes on in other cities and experts may know the other, needs of other cities, but that doesn't mean they are an expert in what Livingston needs and Livingston wants and how the Livingston community feels.
Any other comments?
Hello, so on this contract, by the way, Ms. Portillo, when I ask about what the position does, I actually know what it does. I wanted to know if you guys know, the council knows, and sometimes the public needs to know as well. So, I actually had it up on my iPad when I was asking you guys about what the duties were. But for this thing, it says that they're gonna do the recruitment services for Public Service Director and Police Chief. So, what is the Public Service Director? And what, how many jobs are there in public works now?
Council, we, the Public Services Director, it's supposed, it's going to have oversight of the Public Works Department and the consultants that we have in our Community Development Department to act as a liaison for the many projects that we have going on in the city and the Public Works Department as well. That is one of the reasons why we changed that title to Public Services Director so we can have a broader oversight between the departments. And our approved positions in the Public Works Department, it runs, it runs about 18 positions, so.
Okay, thank you. No, what I actually meant was, like, how many people doing the job of the Public Works Director that we have? Is that one or two people required now to do that one job?
Public Work Director duties are being handled by, by a broad range and most of it comes to me at the moment. Any of the operations are being handled by staff in the, in the Public Works Department.
So, is there one or two? That are doing the job of one Public Works Director? Like, the Public Works Director, Anthony Chivaria, he's gone. How many people are now gonna be doing the one job that he used to do? That's the question.
One person. I'm asking for one, one Public Services Director.
Okay, and then that person will be qualified to sign any documents that are required by the state?
That person will work with a consultant and with the staff that are qualified to sign for any reports to the state.
So, still, we still have a consultant in addition to the Public Works Director?
You know, right now, we have a consultant providing these services and it's working very well for the community. We are on top of our state reports, we are in compliance with our testing requirements.
Well, is it costing us more than the one Public Services Director? Is it costing us more now?
Mayor, the, the Public Services or the Public Works Director was signing on reports because we didn't have that position. At that point, the council was asked to approve a water, wastewater manager position in order to have oversight and signature authority to submit reports. The Public Works Director was filling in for those duties. It was not intended to have this position be the, the person overseeing those reports and signing on those reports to the state. That was the water wastewater manager position that was requested back in May to be funded and for that job description that came to the council for approval.
Thank you, Ms. Portillo. And then, well, like, when we, we, the public ask you, you're answering to the mayor or to us, the public?
I, I report to the mayor and the council. I want them to understand the question that you're asking me.
All right, thank you.
Jim Soria. I thought I heard correctly, but I wasn't sure. There was an RFP put out for these services or was it just selected?
I'm sorry?
Was there a request for bid or was this just the company selected?
The company was selected based on the fact that it is a professional or specialized service and that is one of the items that our municipal code permits the city manager to contract out without having any bidding.
And what was the cost of the services?
I'm sorry?
What was the cost?
The cost is, the quote, it's $19,000 for recruitment.
For $19,000?
Correct.
And that is for 12 weeks of service?
That is to find us candidates that we can hire.
And that's just for, well, it says $38,000 total?
Yes, that is correct.
Up to $38,000.
Up to.
So, it's not 19, it's 38?
For two.
For two positions?
Yes, we're contracting two positions.
Okay. You know, I understand it's in the municipal code, but at the same time, you know, it should've gone out for bid. We probably could've got maybe something cheaper and someone just as qualified to make those decisions. They're not the only, you know, company out there. So, anytime that we can save some money and still get qualified organizations that do this kind of service, I think it should be looked into not just, you know, oh, I think these are good, you know? So, consider, you know, when you spend our money, you know, those factors.
And just to, oops, clarify. From what I remember, when we, when the council amended the position of city Public Works Director, and it's called differently now, I think, Mrs. Portillo, you had explained that it is not a requirement for this person to hold a important certificate to be able to sign off on documentation from, that it's required from the state, which means that we are paying a firm another amount of money for them to come in and do that for us. So, then, the Public Works Position or Public Work Director Position has been changed, but it's not really benefiting us in a sense because we're paying for a Public Works Director that has no qualification to be able to sign off on documentation required by the state. And we're paying a law firm or a firm to come in and do that for us. So, with hiring someone, that doesn't mean that they're gonna come with the certification required to be able to do that. We're still gonna pay two different individuals, right?
The city decided to have a position, the water wastewater manager position, be the position designated to sign off on state reports, not the Public Works Director or the Public Services Director. So, whether my, the Public Services Director is, it's, it's doing the oversight of whoever is going to do the signing, the position itself was designed not to, not to do the signature or the signing of those reports, but those duties were outlined at the water wastewater manager position.
That was amended, I don't know, in one month and it was approved by council, right? So, it's not required anymore. It used to be required for the Public Works Director to hold that certificate to be able to sign off. Director to hold that certificate to be able to sign off, but now it's not required. So, in, in the, the explanation that was given is that it's, it was gonna open it up for more people to apply, but now it seems like we're not finding anybody, even if we changed a lot of the qualifications.
We are going through a very unusual times with our labor market, so therefore, advertising in the local or regional newspapers or, or outlets has not worked, and therefore I'm bringing this item to council to hire in an executive recruitment firm that has the power and the outreach and the marketing power to, to, to conduct a more robust recruitment and outreach for us.
Awesome, thank you.
A question for Vanessa. Do we have anybody in our water wastewater department that have the license that, that could sign off all the reports, so that we don't have to keep paying the consultant?
I, I have to check on that.
Can you please check and give back those?
Any other comment?
I'd like to say 1024 cents a court. Thank you for the comment, Councilmember King. I agree with that approach. I would think you would check first with your staff to make sure that they could maybe substitute and fulfill that role and sign off before I go outsource and pay someone else like thousands of dollars. Also, number two, is that $38 or $38,000? I wasn't sure. But, I think it's $38,000, right? Anyways, well, sometimes it's written out 38,000, 000, 000. Anyways, number two, my second comment, I mean, I appreciate Ms. Portillo's selection of this firm, but I would think working in public service for 11 years, similar to what Mr. Councilmember Moran said, I would like to see at least three bids. Usually there's a RFP process, request for proposals, or a request for qualifications process. By citing that section of the code, I'm curious and interested, Mr. City Attorney, if there's a limit, this just does, this is for everything. This makes it seem like any service is specialized, and I'm just gonna contract out with whoever I think is good and necessarily compare them to other agencies or firms. So just, I don't know, I guess, like, I agree, I think I would like to see a little bit more, what's the word, not transparency, but it just seems like you, there's a method and a process and methodology to doing this. It's not just I select a firm because they give me their information and that's the only one I go with. You know, I would like to see like maybe more options available, and then from there you can see what's cheaper, what are the qualifications, what are the years of experience, what cities, what agencies have they helped out with, what kind of executive recruitment levels have they conducted, those kinds of things. But, and those are just my little comments, but, sorry, Mr. Shatner.
The, the Muni code basically mirrors the state law on this, and that is you don't have to go out for bid on professional services. You do oftentimes on things like engineering services, but for executive searches like this, department head searches like this, very common just to, you know, people, executives know who they are and they, they pick, they pick one. I gotta say, for this one, I've seen searches lately where a single search is $30,000. So to get two positions for $38,000 would be a tremendous bargain.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
Go ahead. I just wanna say very respectfully to Ms. Portillo, when the ex-mayor asked you about the price, you said it was 19, but I think we gotta be really careful with the numbers we give, because it wa, it is 38,000, and it seem, it just, it may seem like you're trying to hide something. So just be careful with, when you say numbers, okay? Because I, I know we all wanted to know the final number, not just the each, there's an 8,000, 19,000, 16,000, and 27,000. But, we, anyways, I just wanted to ask you to be more observant of that. Thank you.
Now we're bringing back to council. Oh, go ahead, sorry.
Thank you, council. It sounds like your city manager is trying to make some decisions to move things forward. You could go on and on and on about, you know, doing RFPs and then that, and then you may not like those selections, and then you can do something else. But, I think we have to trust people, we have to trust our government, and we have to trust the elected officials to make the decisions, and we also have to trust who you put in power. Clearly, you're going to have people biting at you right now because of the situation. But I just wanna say, looking at it from my point of view, don't slow down. Keep, keep making executive decisions, keep moving the city forward, and you know that you're growing the city. I mean, you've got all these projects going all over the place. You know you're growing the city, and growth is incredibly difficult for people to get left behind. You gotta grow anyway. So in terms of this actual decision, going with the firm, like a headhunting firm, to try to find someone, you know, highly qualified, maybe more qualified than we have, I think is an incredible option, especially when you're growing. We need some new ideas, we need some new energy, and we need some people that aren't compromised by, you know, the, the, the past situation of the past councils. Thank you.
Thank you. Bring it back to council for further discussion or questions.
I gotta, I got something. How urgent is this?
Mayor Protemp, this is quite urgent for, for me. I, I need, I need a, a Public Services Director to provide leadership for our Public Works Department. We are trying to, I'm trying to do my best with the resources I have at hand, but I, I really need to get this going, so that way we can, we can have projects moving and we can have improvements and efficiencies. We're, we're trying to deal with putting out, with the current fires that we have. As, we're just operating on emergency basis, and I feel that my Public Works Department and my Community Development Department need some consistency, need some leadership that it's, it's there continuously, not just for our emergencies. And the same with our Police Department as well.
Is there any way, like Councilmember Kang stated, to check into the Public Works, see if we have any qualified individuals, you know, there? That would save us $19,000, and then?
For a Public Services Director, we have already conducted the recruitment. We have not received anything.
Oh, okay.
We have done, we have done that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Yes. So, I, I was just wondering, what are currently, what is, what is the average that we are spending on consultants for, for the additional services that we, that need to be covered within the Public Works Department? I think, i- is that only for wastewater and, and water treatment? And how much is that average?
Right now, in the Public Services or Public Works Department for those state reports, and the compliance and the testing, we have a consultant. The total cost, it's about $24,000 for the services through June of 2022. And, and, and this is being paid out of the water wastewater manager position. This is not being paid out of the Public Services Director position, because the water wastewater, water wastewater manager position, it's the one that it's, it was approved to put these reports out to the state and maintain compliance with the city.
And, so that's through June, but how many months is that? Like, when, when did they start it?
This was started, this was started in September.
So, September through June?
That was about nine months.
Nine months, or less. Okay. So, since this new position has not received any, has not attracted any applicants, can we, shouldn't we consider rescinding that approval that, and then going back to, to how we had it before, and maybe we have a better chance getting a better, a better number of applicants?
I'm sorry, but the Public Works Director position, it's not the, it, it wasn't the position to submit the reports to the state. The council approved a water wastewater manager position to do that job. And right now, a consultant is conducting those reports, submitting them to the state. The water wastewater manager position, it's about an $80,000 just wages per year. I'm paying $24,000.
So, okay, in regards, just so everybody's clear, we're, the people that were si, uh, to sign as a manager, which is vacant right now, that's why we're using that consultant. But when the manager position's filled, we will need, we will need that consult anymore, correct?
I'm sorry?
The, the consulting firm that is used right now to sign, that's in, in place of the manager position, correct?
The water wastewater manager position, which is not in
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Public Services.
I just wanna make, make that clear.
Recruitment, that's correct.
Okay. So any other questions regarding this specific item? Any motions, direction?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mayor Protemp Garcia. Do you have a second?
Yes, I'll second there.
Second by Councilmember King.
Motion approved by a vote of four, one.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to item number four.
I just have a follow-up comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
Again, with this decision tonight, it, it allows Ms. Portillo to, to focus on what she is supposed to do. Well, moving all these items forward is what she has been asked to do as our interim. And giving these positions, putting these positions out there in order for it to be expedited. Again, with all this moving forward, I'm looking at it for her to be able to concentrate more of what she needs to be doing as the oversight of our direction for economic development in, in Livingston, and moving other projects forward, so that those positions are filled, they're, they're handled, and they're reporting back. So again, having Vanessa, the interim, I wanna say relieved of, of those, because she is handling many departments at this moment. So again, opening that up and putting people, qualified people in those positions allows her to really focus and get out there and bring things and bring more businesses into Livingston.
Thank you, Councilwoman Maria Soto. And let's move on to item number four, Ratifying Memorandum of Understanding Resolution, Ratifying Amendments of Memorandum of Understanding, MOU, between the City of Livingston Public Works and Parks Employees Unit. Did you have a question on that one?
Yes, actually, let's see. Let's see, it's page number four of the MOU. And under section 5.3A, there are two items, item number two, which are highlighted in red. Item number two and number three, let me just go back to clarify what the item, what this particular item is, is to adopt the resolution ratifying amendments to the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Livingston and the Public Works and Parks Employees Unit. I do not remember, were these items, Vanessa, were these items presented, brought forward by, by who?
These were items reviewed and discussed over closed session under labor negotiations for the Public Works and Parks Bargaining Group.
But they were brought forward by the union?
They were brought forward. I, as, as the labor negotiator, I brought them forward to the city council members.
So, okay, so, because I, not one time when I was part of any negotiations meeting was that ever brought forward. So, I don't, that's why I was asking, 'cause...
I know it's discussed, it probably the last two closed sessions.
That is correct.
The last two closed sessions?
Yes, specifically. I think you might have been gone.
I was gone only one, the last one. And prior to that, there was no prior discussion to any of this.
Yeah, you walked out of the prior one.
I never walked out of any meeting.
Yes, you did.
I did, when, when Tom was not present, but then, they asked me to be on the phone, and I said yes, but that was not the one time when this was discussed. This was never discussed. So I, I walked out, because we did not have an attorney present, and I did not wanted it to be part of any conversation or decisions with legal advice. And then, I was called two minutes later, three minutes later, and they said, we are able to have the attorney on the phone, if you wanna be on the phone, and I said yes. So, the only time I was absent was the last time, last meeting, on the 7th. So this item was never discussed, previously discussed at any of our meetings. And, and so it just happens that I was absent on the 7th, and this is brought over by, by our city manager? So this was not requested by any of our city employees. This doesn't look right. Who are we trying to protect?
Well, I did, I just wanted to share also, Mayor, that these were items that have been on the negotiating table from the Public Works and Parks Recre, Parks Employees Bargaining Group, not just from the last meeting, but they've been on the negotiating request for the past three months, potentially, since September. There were items that were brought to the council in the, in, in the, in closed session, and this language in particular, because it pertained, it didn't pertain to a dollar amount that we were negotiating, it pertained to clarification on these, section 5.3 of Personnel Files and Disciplinary Actions. It went to our city attorney's office also for review and, and, and recommendation of some, of a language to bring forward to council.
Thank you.
So I just wanna clarify, this was not, I was never part of this. This was never discussed. I've been part of every meeting since January 6th, when I was elected. I have not missed one meeting, I have not been late to any meeting, and this has never, was never previously discussed. So you guys cannot say that this was discussed two times.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to understand. Are you saying this was just put on for the meeting tonight?
No, I asked, when was this discussed, or who was it presented to, by? And Vanessa just responded that Vanessa is the one that brought it forward and offered it, and here it is.
I don't think that's...
Well, that, well, that is your, is that your opinion?
I think...
I'm not asking for your opinion. Unless it's legal advice, then please provide legal advice.
Okay.
Thank you.
We do have their union rep, this was brought, brought to them by, by them, not by any council members.
Hold on, any, any other, any other question?
Yes, the union, they brought it up.
Any other questions? Does anyone have comments regarding this item?
Mayor, councilmembers. Mary McWaters, I'm the business agent for Ask Me Local 2703. I represent the Public Works Bargaining Unit. The language that you're referring to is not to protect or hide something on one person, which is what you're implying. I represent the entire bargaining unit. There's reasons for this language, which you're not at that table, so you haven't heard. We've been at the table since early last year. The former city manager prolonged our bargaining for months and months and months, and then, when he was let go, he did not pass anything on to the interim city manager. when he was let go, he did not pass anything on to the interim city manager, so we basically had to start from scratch, okay? The language that I propose is language that I have in many contracts. I do not just represent the City of Livingston, okay? The tentative agreement that we reached with the city is between ASME, the bargaining unit of Public Works, and the city. I'm not gonna bargain my contract in open forum, that's not how it's done, the police department agency would not do it, neither would the clerical unit. If the city council, you know, if they don't want to agree with it, fine, we'll go back to the table. But we've been doing this for a year now, and quite frankly, we're tired of it. And while I'm up here, I'd like to say, Ms. Portillo and I have not agreed on a lot of things, you know, that's just the nature of my job, what I do. But however, I will say, she has been very professional. I deal with a lot of city managers, I deal with, I deal with a lot of board of supervisors, I mean, I have cities that I manage and, and, not manage, but represent, all of them down the state, and I find her to be very professional. I usually have a pretty good relationship with most people I work with, and that's just part of my job. But if you guys have any questions, I would be glad to go back to the table and not discuss bargaining here for public forum. And I will reiterate, this language is something I have in other contracts, it's not for one individual or two individuals, it's for my entire bargaining unit, because that's who I represent. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Can I, can I ask a question while she's here?
Go ahead.
Is, has this, was this reported to the entire unit, to all of the employees, where all of the public work employees are aware of this language, and they were all in favor?
Yes, it was, we had a bargaining unit meeting, we discussed the TDA, they voted to ratify it, and I came to the city, I'm like, that's how it works, if you don't know how it works, I'll explain it to you another time.
Okay, thank you.
They were there, and I spoke to them all about it, and hardly to anyone, which is because of being abused. The city was abusing it, and that's the reason why, and I'm not gonna discuss it anymore. You wanna talk to me sometime, we can, another thing is, I would like you to stop posting pictures of my members, who are not elected officials, on public forums, okay? That is abuse of your position as a city councilman, and-
She's not in the mic.
And if you continue to discuss, I will talk to legal about discussing this with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Earlier, you talked about, this council talked about respect and trust, but you gotta earn your citizens' respect as well. It's not just about yelling and disrespecting, you know, from the citizens or the yelling, it's about earning the respect and the trust of constituents, and right now, you guys don't have any respect or trust, that's why there's the yelling back and forth. You know, right now, there's, there's a trust, mistrust of what truly happened, and the opportunity that this council had, by one member of the council not being there, an opportunity to bring this forward, all of a sudden, you know, you guys bring this, this contract out with the MOU, you know, like I said, I've been in closed session a lot of times, and, you know, when city managers, experienced city managers, discuss with, with all the council members, all the supervisors, they come in a closed session and, and to discuss all, you know, potential MOU agreements that's gonna be going on. If one council member is not there, they don't take the opportunity to, you know, rush something to the, to the city council agenda and approve it. She can say whatever she wants, and I'm not talking to her, I'm just talking to the mayor. She can say whatever she wants, this is an opportunity, and this is the mistrust continues, this council continues to give from the citizens. There's no respect. Respect is earned. This type of contract, this type of MOU agreements, you know, I'm not gonna accuse anybody, but, you know, like I said, I know a lot of employees is here, some employees have been fired, and they have, for wrongful things, and they've been brought back, and now, you know, other employees will benefit, if there's sexual issues, if there's allegations or whatever, it's gonna be thrown away, you know, with this type of contract or MOU agreement. You know, like I said, I know a lot of employees, a lot of stuff has happened in the back, and this is just gonna, you know, dump all the stuff that their past has, you know, trying to hide their past, and so, so that you can move forward. That is not trust, you don't gain trust this way. Thank you.
I want to add to some of that, like you mentioned earlier, you've been a mayor and council for 20-plus years, two other bargaining groups have the same language that you probably passed 20 years ago. This is not the first bargaining group that's getting this language added on to this. We have two other groups that have it.
I just want to add something, I, you know, I'm hearing all this back and forth, and your abuse and accusing a council, and all I could say is, I don't know, you know, I don't know the lady, I don't know exactly what's going on much, but I could just tell you something, that when you come and talk about abuse, I don't know exactly what's going on. All I could tell you is that, when our city was let go, and there was something with some city employees, I witnessed, me, myself, so that's why I would consider, you know, just what I'm saying, outside, the lady, I saw her push, touched a pregnant lady and tried to take her phone away, this is just me, and Mr. Mayor, you said like this, nodding, nodding your head, so if you want to ask me a question, you're more than welcome to, but this is what I saw, and some big words, big words, which is, you're here as a professional representing somebody, you're not here-
We're here to talk about the item, maybe I have questions specific to the item, let's talk about that.
I'm talking about the item.
Yeah.
You have something personal against me, every time I talk, you try to interrupt me, Mr. Mayor.
We have to stay on our topic.
I don't have nothing to say, just want to say, you have something personal against me, and I know that.
No, I do not, no, I do not, thank you.
Good evening, council, I just want to talk about this issue, and I just want some clarification from Mr. Councilmember Moran, did you say that you haven't missed a single meeting? Is that what I heard you, did I hear that correctly?
I missed one meeting since I've been here, since, since January 6th, when I was elected.
So you have missed a meeting?
That's what I said, I missed one meeting.
Okay, I heard you say you didn't miss a meeting, but maybe you misspoke, or maybe I misunderstood you. You can't keep dragging things out if one council member misses a meeting, that's like, that's like somebody missing lunch, you're gonna have lunch, you gotta have lunch. So I would just say, keep moving forward with these decisions. It, it sounds like Ms. Waterman knows what she's talking about, and it's in other contracts. So if it's in other contracts, and it's the status quo, and, and the distinguished attorney has said that it's okay, and your city manager has said it's okay, then I'd say move forward. Thank you.
Thank you, any other comments?
Mayor, council members, I think what's a little worrisome is the fact that we are trying to remove any written or three-day suspensions from people's employee records after a year, and the only reason why that's concerning, and I might be wrong, but in my employment and my jobs, if I were to get a written discipline or a suspension, then I would not qualify for a lot of things, like moving up as a supervisor or holding any type of leadership position, and so I think that's what's concerning to me, and I might be understanding things incorrectly, especially if council member Gangneep King pointed out that other bargaining units use the same wording, but I think that's just concerning to me. So if a city employee, public works employee was suspended, they'll have a year on their record, they'll have that information on their record for a whole year, and then it'll be removed, and then that means it'll give openings or rooms for them to move up, or, you know, do any of that stuff that might be, they might not be very well qualified. I think that's what I'm understanding, unless I'm wrong, I don't know if anybody could explain to me if I'm understanding it correctly.
So by the way, I did witness what she did as well, outside, and you can make those remarks, it's okay. And also, she mentioned that the city manager, the old city manager left without passing on information, how the heck is it possible to pass information if you guys just booted him out the door, without his 30-day notice, and, you know, whatever else was supposed to be done. I do wanna, I don't think nobody's mentioned what you're talking about, but this is the section number two, disciplinary action more than 12 months old, which were made a part of the employee's personnel file for reasons that are non-related to any further, disciplinary action shall not be considered in such disciplinary action regarding the employee. Written reprimands, this is number three now, written reprimands and disciplinary documents with three-day suspensions or less, and verbal written counseling memo should be removed from the employee's personnel file at 12 months, as long as there have been no new related disciplinary actions. That's what's there, and also, you mentioned that you're tired of negotiating, we'll just take these two things off and get it done.
I have a question for the city attorney, as to how these two paragraphs apply, when the memos or disciplinary actions have to do with the class of protected reportings by other employees, for example, for harassment, toxic work environment, or inappropriate sexual behaviors or actions. Are these going to be the way this is written? Would these be purged after 12 months? Or would they stay in the record to prove that the city is actually working on remedying anything that is brought up as a protected report by another employee?
I'm not the employment law specialist, but I believe that anything regarding protected class is gonna be held separately and not destroyed in any manner.
It's getting late, gentlemen, ladies, I'm missing dinner. By the way, for this item, I think one of the reasons people have concerns is, there's a genuine mistrust between the council and citizens at large, I believe. This item that everybody's pointing to seems very specifically narrowly targeted towards few individuals. Perhaps the council needs to declare if there's any relationships or friendships or anything in there, I think that needs to be cleared out. You heard from a spouse of an employee about what happened. You know, when you hear that, and then this comes up, it puts a lot of items into question. Now, I don't know if Mr. Moran lost his memory or something, maybe he heard it, but he forgot, I don't know, but you have a council member saying he doesn't recall, perhaps you guys could need to go back in the back room and bring it to his attention. I know you, because sometimes maybe, maybe you need to bring it to his attention, says, here's the day you were at the meeting, and here's when we talked about it, because the attorney said two sessions. If he said he missed one, then when was the discussion on the other item?
I said, my best memory was, we talked about this for two, and I think it was the last two sessions that we had, and you could go back and confirm this with the-
No, 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 I'm, Mr. Helen, I'm not saying that you're wrong, I'm not saying that, please understand, I'm not trying to say that, you said two, he doesn't recall, perhaps that needs to go back and be clarified, okay? That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not saying that you're wrong.
Okay.
So go ahead, please, go ahead.
I, I would just say this, and I think Ms. McWater would back me up on this, as she said it before, this would not be here if it wasn't discussed before. That's how negotiations work, you come to a tentative agreement, we finalize it at the last closed session, and then you ratify it at the next open session. You don't, it's, it's nothing is-
But the meeting before-
Can't be new.
But the meeting before, when, when this came forward, and to the one here, there's been changes made, if I remember correctly, is that correct?
Say that again?
This was, the last time this came for a public view, this is exact-
This has never been a public view, this is the first time.
This is the first time.
Yeah, 'cause you do the negotiations in closed session, you know how it works.
I know how it works, and I don't come to a lot of the meetings, but I'm just saying, if a council member says that there was two discussions and there was a misunderstanding, maybe that needs, you guys need to go back in the room and say, here's the day we discussed, here's the day you were here, maybe that needs to be clarified. That's all I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying you're lying, I'm not saying he's lying, I'm not saying, I'm just saying, but what you have now is, and again, public questioning which is right, which is wrong, and then, and this, this couple of items, this two, seems very, very narrowly targeted towards some couple of individuals, at least that's the perception based on what we're seeing. So the council is not only supposed to look out for public works, they're supposed to look out for employees at large, and there has been a lot of questions on how some things got done, and, and you know, I'm not saying that, but it was said before, that some people, they're related to others, and they're friends with others, so now, this is coming up, and people are gonna question, who are you really trying to protect here? So, council, be careful how you vote on this, because all you're gonna do is put more doubts. Thank you.
Thank you, council, for being fair with me and letting me speak the way these other people have spoken twice. I just want to clarify something, the citizens do have a lot of respect for you all, they have an incredible amount of respect, so I don't know where these people are getting it from, that there's mistrust by the, by the general public, you walk around out there and show them who you are, and you're gonna see you have a lot of respect in this community for everything you guys do without even getting paid for it. Thank you.
So, I mean, I hesitate to explain any further, because I don't feel that this is the form for it, but this wording does not take away the city's right to do progressive discipline. It's a matter of, first of all, I will say, the employees get annual evaluations, so when it comes to promotions and what have you, they have annual evaluations in their files. Yeah, they do. Okay, you're interrupting me, but I've seen them, so they do. And if they're not doing them, then, then they should be, okay? But my guys are getting them, I've seen them. Anyway, we'll talk sometime. But anyway, it doesn't take away the discipline plus, that the language is three days or less, so if there's a major incident, it's not gonna come out of the file, and it's not gonna give the city's liability on the city if they're sued about something, I mean, it's gonna stay in the file. Second of all, you know, for instance, just hold on, for instance, if somebody is written up because they're late every day, they're, Jane Doe is late every day, she gets written up, she gets this counseling memo, she continues to be late, she gets written up, continues to be late, she gets suspended, okay? She goes a year from that time, is not late at all, then it can come out of her- Then it can come out of her file. But if she continues, then progressive discipline happens. That's when, that's what progressive discipline is about. That's why the city has a rules and regulations that spells out progressive discipline. Anyway, this language, it's not about one or two individuals, which everybody here thinks it is. It's about my entire membership, and it's because, well, I'm not even gonna discuss it, but it was something that was abused a while back, and I want to make sure it's in my MOU. That's why it's there. But if anybody wants to ask me any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you.
Yeah, I got a question for the, the public supervisor. Do you guys do yearly evaluations on your employees?
He started back up yesterday. Prior to, to a new H R meeting, they were wanting five years.
Thank you.
And thanks for explaining that. That, that does clear it up, and I understand most companies do that. Do the attendance stuff, right? You, you did mention, no, I'm not talking about annual evaluation. I'm just talking about expunging the record, right? But you mentioned if it's something large or something big. Can you explain what big means? What does that mean?
Hi, you have your phone up. If I'm a guest, you're on my hand. Anyway. Well, I get tired of putting her phone in my face. So, anyway, yeah, okay.
Let's be respectful. Thank you.
I will.
No, that's to everybody.
Comment about it?
Thank you.
The question, it was considered a large offense, I'd say.
Okay, okay. Well, if it's something that's really egregious, you know, somebody mentioned a sexual offense or something like that, chances are, they're gonna get fired. Or they're gonna get more than a five-day, more than a three-day suspension, okay? Those aren't coming out of the file. If it's three days or less, it's not gonna be something that is that egregious, okay? And if the, if the behavior does not continue for a year, then the problem should be considered solved. Now, another thing I want to mention is if a case goes to arbitration, which I've got one in arbitration now, if a case goes to arbitration, an arbitrator is not gonna look at something 15, 20 years old. They're not gonna look at that stuff. They're, that's gonna be out of the file. And, I mean, well, no, excuse me. Right now, it's in the file. But the city would bring it up, but the arbitrator's not gonna consider it.
But you can, you said, my, these things, I, I think should stay up in the file, because-
That's where we disagree.
So, so, well, so then that this means that it will be erased? If you, if this goes through, right?
If it's three days or less.
We're gonna move on. This, we're not gonna have a discussion over it. I'm sorry, what organization are you with?
I'm a union rep.
I know, what, what is it? What, union rep, or what organi-
I work for ASME.
What is it?
I work for ASME.
ASME?
ASME, A M S C M E.
Oh, okay, alright. I, I heard ASME, I'm sorry. So that's why I like, ASME, okay, I'm asking. So, I, if it's, if it's gonna clear up some language, tits, you know, this or that, hey, no problem. You know, but a year? Hey, I could do things for a year, and then, oh, I got written up. I'm a good boy for a year. And then you start back up. And then we're, we're going around in circles, we're going around in circles. I think it should stay in the file a little bit longer than a year. That way, whoever's not coming to, conforming to rules and regulations, hey, we have people that, when they get hired, are on probation for 18 months, two years. They gotta follow the rules. I can do something and get written up, and after a year, I could, the process starts all over again, and we're back to square one. I have no problem with cleaning up the language. I don't trust unions. You know, and I've been a police officer and public service and public safety for over 30 years. I don't trust unions. So, I've been screwed over by unions, so I don't really trust them. But, you know, they're there for a reason. So, I'm okay with clearing up the language. I think one year is too short. It should go to at least two years. That puts a person, employee, you know, on notice for at least two years. Ha, I could do a year standing on my head behaving. So I think the language needs to be cleared up a little bit more. That way, you know, if someone does something, then, and it should have a list, okay, if you do this, this is that. If she says something big, then it falls into different categories. I'm well aware of how union works and, you know, getting written up and all that stuff works. So, I think one year is too short. That's my opinion. It should go at least two years. Thank you.
To me, if the business rep says is correct that the entire unit is aware of the final draft, and they voted on it, then it answers some questions, but how they voted, the numbers, is none of our business. That's their business. I respect that, okay? I am a strong union supporter. But the only good unions are what I belong to. I don't know about the others. But, on the other note, we do have a video of the business rep pushing an elected official-
I did not push her, I put my hand on her arm.
Alright, that's, that's not part of the discussion. You have questions specific to the item?
And, right now, this is a public meeting. Everybody's got a time to record, to turn around and lash at somebody, turn around and make comments. It is totally unprofessional, especially of the business rep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Noted. Alright, any other comments? Okay, bring it back to council for any further discussion, clarifications, or motions.
I have, let me see, I think I have one more question. So, the way this is, the language that we have here, is this, is this going, if approved, from now moving forward? Or is this retro? Like, last 12 months, or-
Going forward.
Going forward, right? Okay. I'm sorry?
Okay, moving on. Any other questions? Okay, let's move on, please. Any other questions by the council?
Uh, no, that's it at this time. Thank you.
Okay, any other, okay, what's the, motions, direction?
I'll make a motion to approve it.
A motion by Mayor Potem Garcia. You have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Councilwoman Maria Soto. We'll get roll call, Marca.
Motion, motion approved by a vote of 4-1.
Can you state who the notice? Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to item number five. Approved declaration of certain property a surplus. Resolution proving that declaration of city property surplus in authorization is disposable. We have the fire captain coming up. I'll be recusing myself, although I don't have any financial interest in this item.
Good evening, council. City ma, manager and citizens. So, what we're doing here is we have some gear that's past its tenure life for the NFPA standards. Instead of just throwing it away, the high school, one of the representatives from the high school who are actually teachers for a new program that they're doing for public safety, asked if we could donate the gear to them so they could use it in a non-fire environment for training. And it's, will actually help serve the community, both short-term for donating it to the school and long-term to help us recruit volunteers to keep our volunteer staff, basically staff, because right now, we're having an issue with volunteers. Some of, a lot of them that are leaving are moving out of state. So our numbers are down from almost a 50% since I started here. We'll be down to 11 volunteers, you know, by time January, February, come around, whenever. So, it's a good opportunity for us, instead of just throwing gear away because it's reached its maximum life per the NFPA standards and the manufacturer recommendations, so we could let them use it in a non-fire environment, train on it, and hopefully build interest to help gain recruits later down the line.
Any questions from council?
No questions, just a comment. I think that's a great idea, especially giving the opportunity to some of our kids to learn something new. Or because a lot of times, they don't have that opportunity to, to learn more about how the fire department works and how the volunteer crew works. So, I think it's a great idea, and thank you for doing this.
Thank you. We'll open it up to citizens' comments. Go ahead.
Hey, this is a great thing going on here. This, this is awesome. I'm glad that we're doing this for Livingston High School and, and providing it for the new CTE program that, oh, I forgot his name, Jose, what's his name? Right here. That he's doing for our high school. So that's, that's awesome. Positive stuff. Glad to see positive stuff in the council meeting as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, council, my name is Jose Flores. I'm actually the teacher who's teaching the CTE course over at Livingston High School. So just know, the gear you guys are donating will, will help support the kids at the high school, understand the role of first responders. They're not just learning fire service, they're also learning everything about EMS and a little bit about law enforcement because we're all falling under the same umbrella for public service. But this is a great stepping stone for them to understand, get to actually use gear that's used by professional firefighters. So, so this gear might not just stay here in our community. It might, it might go out through, through the rest of the district. But for now, because I am the only teacher in the, in the district teaching this specific category, it will stay in our community. I'm also getting gear from Merced County Fire Department, so it's, it's not just the city of Livingston who's doing gear, but it's supporting our community. So just know that, that what you guys are doing right now is, is hopefully gonna be a trend that goes in the future with, with gear that would have ended up in the trash. It's gonna now, you know, be repurposed for something that's gonna help the community and hopefully recruit more, more people in, in public service. So, with that, I just want to thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone, anyone else? No, we'll bring it back to council. Any motions? If not, I'm, I'll make the motion to approve. You have a second?
I'll second.
Who's that? Oh. Monica?
Yeah. Bye. Me too.
Motion approved by the vote of 4-0.
Okay, that was the consent calendar. We're gonna move on to discussion and potential action items. Number six is ratify contract for interim chief of police services. Resolution ratifying the contract between Merced County and the city of Livingston for interim chief of police services.
Mayor, councilmen, council members, I am bringing forward the ratification of the contract with Merced County Sheriff's Department and the city of Livingston for police chief services. This is, the city had a need for police chief services, and the sheriff's office was graciously willing to provide services to the city. This is a, a contract that they put forward, and we've been receiving the services from the time the city asked. That was something that, it was, it was, it was great partnership with our sheriff's department, where we were under the understanding that we would be, our citizens will be served, will be, our, our streets will be safe. Our community was going to, to have public safety onboard and leadership before we even could finalize any of this, any of the paperwork as far as the contract items. So I'm very appreciative of the sheriff's office, and I bring this to, to the council for ratification. It is a contract that will go through May of 2022. And it, it could go up to that date, or if we, the city has the ability to end this contract sooner if we are successful into hiring our, our next police chief. At the same time, the, the price or the contract term is not, I'm sorry.
Sorry to interrupt you, but Mayor Potem Garcia needs to recuse himself from this, this item. Sorry, go ahead.
No worries. The contract term is not to exceed $250,000. And that's, right now, we will be incurring these charges out of our budgeted accounts for the police department.
Thank you. Council, any questions at this time? Any clarification?
If I may, Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. So, I know it's in the contract. I think it's in section, page two of the contract, section three, with this term. The term of this agreement shall commence on the 22nd of November, 2021, and continue until the 21st day of May, 2022, unless sooner terminated in accordance with the sections entitled termination for convenience, termination for cost, or non-appropriation of funding. Within, within, within this contract, I did, I did find the description for termination for convenience, but I did not find any other language explaining further regarding termination for cost or non-appropriation of funding. Maybe you can help me find that? Maybe I, I was, I wasn't able to find it.
You, you're correct, it's not there. And this is the county's standard form of agreement. It's basically what, what they will agree to. And also of note is, right below that, down in section four, the, the $250,000, that's just a standard thing they put in for contracts like this, too. A lot of, I know a lot has been made about, oh, you know, they're giving the county, you know, a quarter million dollars for this. And it's really, that's just an up to amount. They'll only be paid for the hours worked. It's basically a contract for service that would potentially go up to that amount, but will most likely be much less.
Okay.
And non-appropriation of funding just means we don't pay. That, that's all that means.
Does that mean we don't pay, or that we don't have funds to pay?
We tell the county that, hey, we can't pay you. So that would, that's, that's what non-appropriation of funding means.
Okay, so that brings me to my next question on, okay, so number seven, on page, I think it's page four, where it says, termination for convenience. So, this agreement, notwithstanding anything to the contrary here in above or here in after set forth, may be terminated by county at any time without blah, 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 blah. But nowhere in this contract does it say, may be terminated by city. All of, and actually, I think you, you made a good point, that this contract is provided by the county and, and that there's no language, and I was wondering why there's no language referring to the city.
Well, as, as stated by the sheriff tonight, it's, it's a, we have him for as long as we need. we need him. That's why it's an up to $250,000 amount. He's just saying, if I decide I can't do it, that, that's the termination for the county's convenience. But we just say, hey, we, we went through the recruitment process, we have our chief, so we don't need you anymore. That happens at any time.
So, but I'm just afraid that, I'm not saying that in, you know, but if it's not, if it's not on paper, you know, it's not going to stand, you know, it's not going to stand in court, because if it's not on the contract, it was never said. In court, you're not going to be able...
Okay, well, do we can, we can add something tonight to make you feel more comfortable with it and discuss that with the interim chief?
Mayor.
So if we just want to add, "Termination for city's convenience shall mean they have found their permanent police chief," we can easily add that in.
The contract on page one states that this agreement is based to fulfill the city's needs. So we are having this agreement as far as long as the city needs it. Therefore, the, the county is covering their language as far as like the county has the ability to terminate this contract in the event that they, they, they have a need for the lieutenant to go back to his duties. They can, they can let me know, you know? We have to have our, our, our staff back. But as far as this agreement, it, it states that it is open and it is enforceable for as long as the city needs it. When we don't need the services, we can definitely connect or like contact the county and let them know that we have our chief. It is their intent to help us until we have a chief onboard.
And that's exactly what the sheriff said on the record earlier tonight as well.
I understand, I understand, but we're here now representing the county. I am here representing the city. So I'm just, I'm just looking at the language in the contract. I mean, it can be my brother doing the, the contract for the county, but, you know, here, I'm the council member.
Well, like I said, we can just add whatever makes you feel comfortable. We could either put it at the end of the section that Vanessa just referred to, or we could add it in the termination for convenience, if you'd like to put it there.
So, you know, it's just, it's just a language. I mean, you dealt with contracts, you know, plenty of contracts in your lifetime?
Yeah.
You know, and, and once again, I'm, I'm here to look after the city and its residents. So, so, yeah, so maybe some additional language to clarify some like, some of that? And then on page seven of the contract, number 19, and it's kind of connected, the breach of contract, upon, upon breach of this agreement, and I think this kind of, you know, this is why it brought me here, upon breach of this agreement by the city, county should have all remedies available to it, both in equity and or outlaw. What does that mean?
That just means if we don't pay them, they can sue us to get the money in any way they want.
See, so, so, you know, kind of going back to the contract, it, it just, it kind of, which is fine, I mean, you know, I would probably do the same thing if I was in the position, I would always protect the county if I was there, you know? But in this case, they're doing their job, but I don't see us looking up to the city.
We don't need that because we're, we're not doing the service for them, they're doing it for us, so we wouldn't need that.
Okay, so just, just language clarification, and just as long as we have, be very specific to how can we, you know, once, once, and, and I'm not saying that, that they're not going to agree and say, okay, you know, we already found someone and, you know, by all means, we don't need your services starting Monday. I'm not saying that they're not going to say no to it, but I'm just saying if it's not in writing, we're not protecting the city. That's it, thank you.
Any other comments? Questions? Or take it out for public comment? We do have our interim chief here. Anybody has any questions? Thank you.
Catherine Shaw Rodriguez. I think what's, is sticking in most people's craw is the, is not so much questions about the character of the sheriff's department, but the cost of the contract, especially the $250,000 cap, that up to $250,000. I mean, it, it, it astounds me that, well, it's just a standard number, so we're just going to slap it in there, because a 40-hour work week times 26 weeks times $125.92 per hour equals $130,957 for a total of six months. So why do we need a contract written for up to $250,000? Why does it have to be that? Why a cap so high? Why not up to $150,000? Because $150,000 minus that $130,957 leaves $19,043 left over for mileage, and at 96 cents a mile, that's about 763 miles per week over six months. So the question folks really are having is, why is that extra $100,000 really necessary in a cap? Why was it so necessary that it was written into the contract when a $150,000 cap would seem much more reasonable? And if you really needed to extend it, if you really needed more, then you could come back to the council in open session, put it on agenda, explain it, and ask.
I think if I, if I could, Mayor Council, I, I think that the county does that so they don't have to do that, come back and forth and all these extra meetings. That, that's my understanding of, of why they do it. So we do this once, we've got that cap which will more than cover what you're going to need, and then we don't have to spend more money, because it's staff time to do an, an extension, and a report, and a notice, and all that stuff. So I believe that's, that's the reason, and that makes sense to us as well.
Well, it's really much more transparent to have a lower cap, especially when you compare the cost of the service to the cost of the previous police chief's contract. It, charging up to $250,000 under those circumstances, when you compare it to what we were paying for a police chief, seems extremely high.
Mayor, if I may, you know, in regard to the, to the contract dollar amount, I just want to add that we're only getting charged for the hours that we use the service, so we are getting billed for the hours that our interim chief is here at the city, conducting the, the duties of police chief. In order, just to put it into perspective, in order to reach a $250,000 contract amount, the interim chief would have to travel seven days a week to the city of Livingston from Merced to exhaust about $5,000 of, of a round trip for the mileage. And the rest, it would equate to somewhere around 80, 80-plus hours that he would have to put into the city in order to charge us for $250,000 worth of a contract. The, as the interim chief shared, and the sheriff shared earlier, we're only getting billed for the hours that we are getting the service, and at this moment, that is not equate to 80 dollars, 80 hours per week.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Jim Story again. Well aware of Lieutenant Hale's experience. We've worked together, and we've agreed on things, and we've disagreed on things, so, but I, I know he's well-respected. My, my thing and my concern is, you know, we're going to go to item seven, and, you know, the city manager, or interim city manager wants to be city manager. My question is, why didn't we ask one of our sergeants to act as acting chief? Sergeant Raymond Fong, 20 years of experience. Sergeant Ramirez, right up there. I was acting corporal, and the police chief would leave me in charge, and I ran the day-to-day operations. So we have purposely experienced officers that could come in and run the department. Why weren't they not asked? Were they asked? I, I don't know. Can you answer that?
Mayor, I've, I've considered coming into a contract with the sheriff's department was the best decision for the city and our police department, and that, that is the reason why we have interim chief Hale, and, and I appreciate his leadership and, and what he's bringing forward to my department. I, I think that, 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 that was what we needed, or that's what the city needed and my department needed.
So at this point, you're saying you don't have confidence in Sergeant Raymond Fong or Sergeant John Ramirez to run the police department?
I'm, I'm not discussing any, any abilities of my staff, but I just want to share that it, I, at the moment, at, at this moment, and with this contract, Chief Hale is what I believe is what was the leadership we needed for the city.
You want to be city manager, so, you know, I don't know you. You were, you were acting, or you were a finance director, but you want to be city manager. So I think you should give consideration to what we have here at home. Sergeant Raymond Fong, great officer. Sergeant Ramirez, great officer, they know Livingston. No offense to you, Sergeant Lieutenant Hale, I know that you're, you're, you're a great deputy, but we do have capable people here. So if you want that same respect to wannabe city manager, you should consider what you have here at home. You know, if I have steak at home, I'm not going to go out and get steak. So you have purposely capable officers, and I think that you did them a disservice and disrespect that you didn't even consider them. They could have surprised you guys, and we wouldn't have to pay these, these fees. If I was in their spot, I would be offended that they weren't even considered or thought of, you know, they're going to respond to your house, but they could be great police chiefs. Maybe they have that in mind. And you're, you're, you're reaching out for services where we have purposely capable sergeants that could run the police department and not have to pay these fees, and they could be acting chief. So to not consider them, I think that's disrespectful and disservice to them. So now I'm questioning you being a city manager, if you're not going to look at your own house and people first before you reach out to what you think is best for the community. We have perfectly capable sergeants, police officers here that could be acting police chiefs in the meantime, and save us money. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Good evening, council. Dwight Larks again, here to talk about this item. I want to talk about a couple of different things on this item. So I'm a big cannabis advocate, right? And so, and the sheriff, Sheriff Vern Warnicki is, from my experience with him, completely against cannabis. He and I have a different take on the plant. And I want, for me, I want Livingston to be grown as much pot as possible, because I know what a healthy plant it is, right? And how it replaces alcohol and opioids and all these things that people are now learning about. Like, this is what I've been preaching for the last almost 20 years of my life. So that concerns me, bringing the, the sheriff's department into a community, Hispanic community, where I'm trying to get as many people to grow pot as possible, because I know it's good for them, and there's nothing wrong with it, right? But I also know that this man and his department, they also know what they're doing. So in terms of a police force, I know that, that he runs a very tight ship. I know that because my brother was a sheriff's deputy. The guy that took his spot is now lieutenant. And so, you know, you, you weigh what, what the, what, what the, what our community is like, and then you weigh what they need. So that's just one thing to consider, maybe have a discussion. The other thing is, and I just want to piggyback off what the gentleman just said about, about ca, we, us having capable sergeants and police officers. If you have a, if you have a, a team, and you have a, a, a capable running back, that doesn't mean he's going to be a good quarterback, and you may lose a good running back. So that's also possibly a decision factor that our new, our interim city manager is making. So it's, I find it offensive that she's being accused of being disrespectful to the people that are already there doing a great job. Maybe she wants those people there doing that good job, and have somebody with different experience and oversight kind of watching that, that football team. And I think that's what's happening here. So even though the sheriff and I see differently on, on a plant, right, it could be any plant, it could be a tomato plant, but it happens to be cannabis, even though we see differently, I think that we have to go with the city manager's decision in order, in order to keep that highly skilled team on the streets and doing what they do. I don't think that we need to disturb that, and I don't think it's disrespectful at all to let those players play their, their positions and let them continue to play their positions well, because it sounds like they're doing a good job. Thank you.
Few people got a second chance. I coached football for a long time, and I had many players that could fill the positions from quarterback to running back. You always want your best 11 out in the field, and right now, we have our best 11 at the police department. You know, I could pull kids from a running back to put in this position. They could play multiple positions, but if you don't give them that opportunity to shine, they're not going to shine. I always wanted my best 11 out there, and I didn't go out to another team and say, hey, come here, I want you to be quarterback, here, I want you to be. I had, I worked with what I had, and I gave them the opportunity to shine. I am not a fan of cannabis. I never told my kids, hey, smoke this joint, it's good for you, it's going to make you healthier. I never wanted cannabis here in Livingston when I was a mayor. I oppose it. It may have some healthy benefits, but I'm not going to push it to my kids. Who's here, who's a parent here? So you tell your kids, go ahead and smoke weed?
My kids work at the dispensary.
Okay, so they smoke weed?
Okay. All right. We're off the subject now.
All right, well, I'm just, he, he brought it up, cannabis, so I'm just saying, I don't tell my kids, and I've never told any of my players, smoke pot, it's good for you.
Okay.
So, again, you always want your best 11. If you don't go and look to see what you have at home, which we have perfectly capable sergeants that could run the department, I'm just saying that we could save money that way. If you don't even look at what you have, and you just go out for services, you're wasting our money, and that puts me thinking that you may not have the best interest as city manager for the city of Livingston if you don't look at what you have here at the, at the city.
Any other comments?
I just want to say, this, this situation that we're in without a chief of police isn't a, a chance for the city to let someone shine. This is an opportunity for problems to arise, and so choosing someone to come in and fill that position so that problems don't arise, I think is ahead of trying to let some individual shine. And I think that by bringing on this sheriff's department, I think that you're putting the city first, and you're not putting someone to shine. You're not focusing on one person or a couple of people, you're focusing on the city. No, this isn't about anybody shining right now, this is about policing the city.
Thank you. I think there's somebody on the phone.
Hello?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Mayor's members of the council. This is Ruth Cordova. Well, you know, it, it's not about people shining or not. I, I, I fully support the city manager, members of his council. You know, you, you, you want to, you want to give everybody an equal opportunity, and there are other police chiefs from other policing agencies, or, you know, I, I, I work for the LA County Sheriff's Department, a very, very large department, and there may be somebody within our department that can bring in their, their experience and, and be in. can bring in their experience and be enough to your city. They're a very small city, but there are other leaders that have exceptional leadership and should be given an opportunity to also be enough to the people. And there are Latinos as well. So, I fully support the city manager and I fully support the city council to give each and every person an equal opportunity and each leader an equal opportunity despite of the sex race, color, creed, and a female too. Give them all a chance. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there's somebody else on the phone.
Yes, good evening, council. Honorable Mayor, why aren't we hiring from within? Can somebody give me an answer on that?
Mayor, our internal candidates may have an opportunity to apply if they're interested when we're conducting the recruitment for a full-time police chief.
Did you hear that?
No, I did not.
Go ahead, Vanessa.
Internal candidates may apply once we have the, once we open the position for recruitment, when the recruiting firm will move forward and advertise the position and review the candidates, and they all have an opportunity to apply.
So why didn't we start there first?
Sorry.
So why did we, how come we didn't start there first?
Well, it takes a process to hire someone. We're looking right now, according to the timeline, we're looking at running, I mean, advertising, running this recruitment, doing the review of application skills and so forth. We're looking at about three months. So, I need leadership right now. Therefore, I'm bringing this agreement to your, for ratification.
Okay, so, you're going against me, that's understandable, but you have Ray Fong, who's been there for, well, he's been a law enforcer for over 20 years, and I agree with the ex-mayor, Soria. Why not consider him?
I think he has an opportunity to be identified somebody, definitely if he has oppo, I mean, once the application process begins, you know, if he wants a position, he'll be having the opportunity to apply and be considered. So that's a real possibility.
Well, that should have been your first call. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Okay, so, Mr. Lawyer, with all due respect, first of all, I want to say that Gang and Deep, Vanessa, Juan, Maria, and Jose, no one has ever disrespected me up here, so thank you guys. And I hope I haven't, and if I have, I apologize. The only one that has is the lawyer. But anyways, you said that you're going to, you're going to do what makes Jose feel better, but it shouldn't be that. It should be what is best for Livingston, not what makes Jose feel better. Jose is there to ask the questions and make sure that we're doing what-
I believe he's acting on behalf of the citizens of Livingston, so we're saying the same thing.
Mister, can you please let me finish, like I asked you to respect me? Please? And then you can, and then you can respond. And Mr. Mayor, can you please, you and Raoul, I know excluded himself for this because he's part of the sheriff's department, but I do appreciate that, that he did say that earlier, that everyone up here should respect. And like I said, nobody has disrespected me and most of the council, but it's been the lawyer. Anyway, so, I lost my train of thought now, but yes, you should be doing what's best for the city, not what's best for Jose, because again, Jose's just trying to figure, not figure out, but trying to ask the question so that the city is getting the best deal. We don't doubt that the sheriff and the interim chief over here, we don't doubt that you can do the job. I think the sheriff's department does a great job around the county and in Livingston as well. So it's not about that, it's about the amount that is being charged. Right now, there's a contract in Atwater for two RSOs, I believe it's $250,000. That's for two RSOs for one year, not six months. Merced has a contract for one RSO for $185,000. And I know the sheriff earlier, and I respect the sheriff Vern Warnke, and I know him personally, and he did bring up the fact that it includes benefits and so on, and probably retirement as well, because for it to be that high, it probably includes the city paying the retirement as well. But, like I said, that is also included in those other two contracts in the city of Merced and Atwater. So I don't, so it's not that they cannot do the job, I'm sure they can, but it's the amount, and that's something that maybe we should do something like Catherine said, is cap it at, you know, 100 and whatever the chief's, the old chief's contract was, and then if you need to come back, come back. It's okay to come back and renegotiate. But yeah, so that's the questions I had, and like I said, thank you. There was one more thing, but I lost my train of thought when Mr. Lawyer interrupted me. Thank you.
Any other comments? Bring it back to council for any further discussion?
Mayor, just to, you know, I agree, Mr. Rand, everything he does is for the citizens of the city of Livingston, so I don't know why we have to quibble about even those things. But to address that and to clarify this, the easiest thing to do is on page one, paragraph one, at the, after "as needed," just put "as needed until the hiring of a permanent police chief." Done.
Any other questions, council? Comments?
Yes, just one question. And I think this would be more for Vanessa. If we had, if we had, say, one of our sergeants in that position at this moment, how much money could we have saved?
I'm sorry, if we had a sergeant?
If we had, if we had one of our sergeants like we've done in the past, like sometimes, like in this situation, if we had that option that one of our sergeants could have fulfilled that position and be in charge of or and guide the police department until we had, until we did the search for a full-time chief, how much could we have saved?
At the moment, with the decision that I've made, if we were to put a sergeant in the position of interim chief, we would still be down a sergeant. So, I need the department whole, and therefore, I decided to request for the sheriff's office to help me fill the leadership position that I was having vacant.
But, okay, so I still don't have an answer to the question. If we had that sergeant, regardless of how many officers we have, if we had 20 of them, if we had 20 officers in the police department and we asked one of our sergeants to step up until we had, we have a chief, could we have saved this 200, up to 200, or whatever amount we're going to end up spending?
We could have, we could have had savings from having an internal candidate, person or employee fill in a chief duties, but at the same time, that was not the option for my department at the moment.
Thank you.
So just to get it correct, so last month's bill was $15,895. Let's say if that's going about the same amount of hours, I don't know how many hours that chief worked, but if we continue to work the same amount of hours and we find a chief within 60 days, we're going to be under $60,000 bucks. It's not going to reach that $300,000, $40,000 a month. That's just, you know what I mean? If we find a chief in two months, I don't think we'll go over $50,000.
Any other comments by the council? In regards to myself, you know, I fully support Vanessa's decision. At the moment, we needed stability in the department, leadership in the department. We didn't have the, we couldn't afford losing an officer or sergeant to fill in that role at that moment. We needed the department to move along and be effective and provide public safety to the community. So that was her best option, and I fully support it. And I think, like we've explained it many times, and the sheriff noted, you know, we're hoping to hire somebody as soon as possible, as soon as that happens, and we would thank the sheriff's department for their service and helping us out when we needed it the most. Like they noted earlier, it was $15,000 for the first month, so we're hoping that remains the pattern for, you know, next several months. And you're right, you know, it could have been where we asked somebody to do the interim internally, but there's different things that Vanessa had to weigh, not only the savings, but, you know, the service that the department was going to provide to the community. Yeah, you might be saving money, but you're losing an officer out there that could make a difference between saving a life or stopping crime. So there's, you can't really put a value of money on her decision or see it that way. You have to look at other things as regarding public safety in general and the totality of her decision-making. So it's not fair for anybody to really pinpoint that. I think it's, you know, it was a wise decision, and like I said, I think everything's been working fine. We're getting, you know, positive feedback from the community. You know, our interim chief has, interim chief has integrated himself with our department and is doing great. But like, there'll be an opportunity for those officers or sergeants that are looking to be promoted or wanting the police chief to apply, and I encourage them to do it. And who knows, maybe they will get it. But like, at the moment, at the urgent need of leadership, that was the best decision that could have been made. It doesn't mean we could change our mind later on, maybe things are going well, maybe the interim chief identifies somebody that could potentially take over until we find somebody, or whatever the case may be, or Vanessa does further, you know, assessment of the department, and that could definitely change. This contract is used to provide services in the meantime until we do come up with a solid plan, and we are grateful for the county, for the sheriff's department. Like I said, we've received positive feedback from the community in regards, you know, of you guys being here and providing and helping us out. So, I think, like I said, we need to consider the different things that were took, that Vanessa considered to make that decision. With that said, any motions or?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I remember what I was going to say tonight.
Sorry, we closed it for comment, man. I'm sorry, we took enough time with it. Any further, or any motions or direction?
Just before we go and we decide what to do, just for clarification, I do appreciate the services that the sheriff are providing, and I do trust without a doubt that anybody in that position will be able to do what's best for our community, for our residents. My only concerns is just what I have in front of me, you know? Just my respect to everyone, and that's it. So, at this moment, the way, so, I'm not in support of how, of this agreement, and I'm not in support of how it was conducted, so I move to not approve this item resolution to ratify the contract.
We have motion to not approve the contract by council member Jose Moran. Do we have a second? If the motion dies due to lack of second, any other direction or motions?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have motion to approve by council member Maria Soto. Do we have a second?
Were we going to add that towards the end?
Oh, yeah. Do you want to add the addition? What was that, Tom? Could you repeat the?
At the end of paragraph one on the first page, "until the hiring of a permanent police chief."
You want to amend your motion, Maria, with that additional line? Tom?
"Until the hiring of a permanent police chief."
A motion to approve until the hiring of a permanent police chief.
I see, we have motion with the addition of that language.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question real quick in regards to that addition?
There's a motion on-
I'll second it.
Second by council member King.
He has his question.
Go ahead, your question?
This is for legal. Does this have, because of the language change, would this have to go back to the board of supervisors for their ratification with the change?
I'm not sure if they have the authority to accept minor changes or not. Usually not.
Cool. The board of supervisors? Or?
Yeah, for a clarification, it's a non-substantive change, I doubt it has to go back to the board.
It doesn't?
I would not think it would go back to the board, no. It's a very minor change. It's just a clarification, but I don't know, the county might have different rules. I don't know.
Do you think the town-
Motion approved by a vote of three, one.
Monica. And then we're going to move on. Move on to our approved agreement for permanent city manager services resolution, proving entering into an agreement with Vanessa Portillo for permanent city manager services. Item number seven.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Vanessa Portillo, this is kind of the culmination of her career to this point. She's, based on her years in government service, specifically her serving as the Livingston Finance Director, Acting City Manager, and Interim City Manager, you directed us to negotiate a contract with her to take on the permanent duties. The contract is basically in the form of the former city manager's contract. It is a little less generous in benefits, and it, because of the, you know, real frankly, as I always talk, because of the political environment in Livingston, you know, particularly now, you know, as we see tonight and many Tuesday nights, and with the fact that four council members are under recall, you know, she's taking a big risk to take this on. So, in order to do that, to agree to do that, she, you know, needs a four-one vote for termination. And if there is to be a termination, an additional six months notice, because again, she's really jumping off the diving board to take this on a permanent basis. So, in a nutshell, that's what you have. Again, it's a standard form based on Mr. Ramirez's contract, and with that, I'm happy to take any questions you have.
Thank you, Tom. Council, any questions? Clarifications, comments?
Thank you for allowing me to always be the first one to ask questions. So, I was doing some research in regards to what are some of the average requirements for city managers throughout the Central Valley, and there were a couple items, and then I understand that not everyone, you know, there's a difference between having the experience for city management positions, but there are a few requirements that stood out that are very common in at least two other contracts from other cities in the Central Valley that I looked at, and some of the other requirements from other cities that are currently looking for city managers and then that they're looking for- are currently looking for city managers and then that they're looking for. One of them that stood out, or one of a few, is that to have at least five years' experience in local government, meaning, you know, not only experience in local government, like, I know that Miss Portillo has a lot of experience in finance, and it's great with numbers, I would assume, but having at least five years' experience in city management, or... So I don't know, if she's had five years' experience in city management, must possess good character and integrity, very customer-oriented, and, I mean, there's many more, but those are some of the ones that stood out and that I can relate to, and able to manage a diverse team of subordinates and department heads. In the last couple of months, I, you know, I'm not only heard from various city employees from various departments where they had some concerns regarding her, the way of her making certain decisions. So, and personally, I have also had some experience with Vanessa, sometimes, actually just recently, there's an email that was, and I can also, and this is not the only time that I heard from other people, that sometimes calls are not answered, emails are not responded to. One of my emails was responded eight or nine days later. Some emails, you know, and normally, I give people the benefit of the doubt, it's normally 24 hours to 72 hours on a regular business world, but seven or eight days, it's just not. I mean, and it's not that me as a council member would have privileges, you know, from any other resident, but I, you know, experienced, having that experience with some of the emails and some, you know, I do believe that that does happen. And also, my, in my own professional experience as a council member, I, there's been more than two, three occasions where I have found invoices being paid without first being looked at, with mistakes, you know, things that we're paying for that we're not supposed to be paying for, and then later being, you know, I guess corrected, you know, but even, but that's after the fact that I found them. So, and I'm really surprised, actually, because her main background is in finance. So, Mr. Tom, I think he also made a very good point. She has chosen to jump into this, but just like she has chosen to jump into it, she could have chosen, she could choose, still choose, to go back into finance. That is also an option, and not have the risk. But then again, it's her option. And, you know, at one point, you know, up to a certain point, the amount that we're paying, which is, I think someone mentioned, or someone said earlier, that it's the same amount that the previous city manager is being paid $184,620, $184,620, but it's like, it wouldn't be fair for me to say that I have the same experience as her in finance. I might have some experience in finance, but in no way I would have the same amount of experience that she does. So if I was to apply for her position, I'm not expecting to get paid as much as she would get paid now, you know? And to say that, to come in into a job with little, to no experience, as a city manager and offer the same amount without a question, and also not even doing RFP, how do we know that we don't have other people out there more qualified for this position, you know? Once again, I'm looking at, and I'm looking up to the benefit of the city, and what would be best for the city. In addition to some additional language in the contract, where it says part of the terms, item two, term of the agreement, I have never in my life seen this before, and I know that I asked Tom this before, if he has seen this type of language, you said that, I think you said that you have, but, you know, unless I can see and have in front of me other contracts with similar language that says this agreement will continue indefinitely, indefinitely, instead of three to four years, and, you know, once again, it's just language and how it can be perceived.
I...
Yes, go ahead.
I'll wait until, I can answer whenever you want.
Okay, okay, thank you. And then, you know, on item number four, duties and responsibilities, it is recognized. The city manager devotes a great deal of time outside of normal city, blah, 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 city hall office hours. What are the normal office hours for a city manager? I don't know. So this might, then again, I don't know who this question might be for. What are the normal hours for an average city manager? Is it eight o'clock in the morning? Is it seven o'clock? Is it 10 o'clock in the morning? Normally, I, before I became an educator, I was in the private sector for almost, for a little over 30 years, and I was, you know, in management, and I would, but then again, this is just me. I would be the one that wanted to be there before anybody else got there, and I would be the last one to leave, you know? I would not have any of my other employees or people that I was supervising be there before I was. So just wondering what the, you know, and I know that it's hard to say, okay, I'm going to be there, or someone is required to be there from 10 to 5, or 8 to 5, you know, as needed. You know, that means having to attend events in the weekend, late during the week, you know? We just had the parade, we have sometimes other things going on in the weekend. Will you be available to do that, you know? Have you done that? And then again, I think everybody already knows about the language, about the city council may terminate the agreement or port use employment, you know, and it goes back to the, you know, what looks like a 13-month compensation, but anybody else can put it in a different way, you know, being seven months or six months. And those are some of the concerns and questions that I have so far.
Yeah, I just want to say, the term of an agreement for a city manager, a city attorney, is really meaningless, because if you can, the vote removal is the key, and that can happen at any time. I always say, I have a two-week contract, so you could put a number of years in there if you want, but it really doesn't make any difference. I know indefinitely, I mean, it sounds like something big, but it's really not, doesn't mean much. And all these things, the duties, responsibilities, this is all Mr. Ramirez's contract, except for some of the terms and those few changes, this is all that was in the last city manager contract.
Thank you. So I guess the rest of the questions are for, I don't know, for somebody else? I don't know, Ms. Portillo would like to answer any of those questions?
Mayor, council member, I can share that I've been working for, in a governmental, in the governmental field for over 17 years. I've held to different levels of positions, where I've managed directed projects, conducted training, coaching, mentoring staff, interacted with members of the public, members of the council, external customers, contractors, developers, and it's no different than the work that we're assigned, that I'm assigned as a city manager, dealing with employees, developers, the community, and so forth. As far as personnel items, I follow policies and procedures that are, I will not do anything that will put the city in a liability, as long as I'm following the policies and procedures and the guidelines that we have set in place. As far as city ordinance and state laws, that's what I guide myself with any kind of personnel items, making sure that the city is not in a position where they're going to be at risk or liability. In that sense, to me, that is looking for the benefit of the city, and for most, I mean, to me, that is the most important job that I take upon me to ensure that the city, it is, it moves forward, it meets its deadlines, it meets its obligations, and it's free of liability.
Thank you, Vanessa. Any other comments by the council or questions at this time? I'm going to go ahead and open that up for citizen comments.
I think it's really disappointing to witness a very, we have two very strong women sitting here in front of us, and it's really disappointing to see how, meeting after meeting, there's a lot of lack of information and lies. You were asked, Mrs. Portillo, if there's been any grievances against you lately, and you stated no, and you know that there's two grievances against you by two different departments. And so it's just concerning to me, the lack of honesty, the lack of transparency, and if this is how you're going to carry yourself as an interim city manager, how are you going to carry yourself as a permanent city manager? And that's just really disappointing from other women in the community watching your role. But I know that council is going to decide and do whatever they think it's best. It's been on record that no matter what we say up here, you all just ignore and decide and choose whatever you think it's best, without acknowledging any of our concerns. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Jim Soria, what is the yearly salary that the city manager will be making?
$184,620.
And that doesn't include benefits?
No, that's the, that's just the base salary.
And what is the, if, you know, you decide to pick, or what is her severance if, you know, six months from now?
Six-month severance.
Six-month severance? Okay. And that's what Jose had before?
Yes.
Okay. So at this point, this is your, this is your first city manager job?
That is correct.
This is your first city manager job?
That would be correct.
Okay. So I'm comparing apples with oranges. We have Mr. Jose Antonio Ramirez, plethora of experience, plethora of years as city manager. I know what he first started, because I hired him as a mayor. It was $160,000. I don't feel comfortable giving Miss Portillo her first city manager job at $180,000, especially with the decision that, you know, you didn't go in-house to get a acting police chief. You said that you would lose a sergeant. Well, I'll solve that problem for you. You make another officer an acting sergeant, so you don't lose a sergeant, and now you're getting experience from an officer becoming an acting sergeant and a sergeant as a police chief. So strike one on that decision-making. So I'm more comfortable, I'd be willing to give you an opportunity, just because you have some experience as a finance director. Former finance director, may he rest in peace, Odie Ortiz, stepped in as interim city manager. I don't remember paying him $180,000. He stepped up. Police Chief Ruben Chavez did acting city manager. He wasn't making that amount, so I don't think, you probably deserve a chance, but not at $180,000. I'd be more comfortable you trying the job at about $150,000, $140,000, being your first city manager job. You haven't proven to me, and again, I don't know you, but the decisions that I've seen so far, I don't think you deserve $180,000. I would be willing, as a citizen, to give you an opportunity, but a lot less, and then we could save some money, and then we could see if, you know, you're doing a great job. Hey, more power to you, we can raise that up. I think six-month severance pay is way too much. I think it should be down to three months, and most city managers do have three-month severance pay, chief, police chiefs. So at the same time, be considerate of the money that you're using for the public. It is not your money. This is not in the best interest of the city, paying a person, being their first city manager job. No disrespect, I know you're qualified as a finance director, but that is way too much for a person to be getting, being their first job. So that's all I have to say. Be considerate of the public's money. It doesn't belong to you. So, you know, just don't give it away. Again, I haven't seen anything that this city manager has proven that she deserves $180,000 a year without any experience. I hope if they do select you, that you will be out here in the community, Christmas events, all kinds of events. If we don't see you in those events, then you don't have the city of Livingston at heart.
Catherine Shell Rodriguez, wearing my unofficial historian hat. Going back to December of 2019, after two unsuccessful attempts to recruit an assistant city manager, finance director, a third recruitment was held in early September 2019, which eliminated the duties of assistant city manager. The contract with Vanessa Portillo was ratified for that position on the December 3, 2019 city council meeting. The base salary at that time was $129,612. In July of this year, Ms. Portillo received a raise of $35,388 when she was suddenly promoted to interim city manager. This contract, five months later, includes another salary increase of $19,620. It also includes a poison pill of seven months' advance notice by council of the intent to terminate the contract. This contract also has language in it that basically says it could continue into perpetuity, basically forever, without a required renewal date, which is unprecedented for the city of Livingston. Once again, I will say that just because something might be done in another city, somewhere else in California, does not mean it should be done in Livingston. We are not other cities, we are Livingston.
Hey, Jimmy, the, I think Odie, rest in peace, was actually doing the job of three people, the Public Works Director, City Manager, and Finance Manager, if I'm correct. But anyways, what I wanted to say earlier, Mr. Mayor, when I asked if I could do it, was that I did agree with you guys and with Vanessa on going out to do the recruitment for the police chief and Public Works Director, but also, and also give opportunity to internal candidates. I think that's a great idea. But I also think that's what you should do for the city manager position. Do the exact same thing for the city manager position. Recruit, go outside, but still give her the opportunity to apply and be a part of that process. I don't... I don't, Ms. Portillo, I don't know if you're qualified or not. I don't know that. But I know that you stepped up and you're doing, hopefully, what you think is best for the city. So it's a hard position to be at right now for you, Ms. Portillo. But anyways, it's part of the beast that comes with doing this. So hopefully, you'll still get through whatever needs to be done and hope, have a good Christmas with your family. The lawyer said that this was just a mirror image with a few changes of Mr. Ramirez's contract. So the changes, though, are that instead of simple majority, it's four to one now. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. So also, it's a forever and ever contract versus a four-year contract, correct?
Correct.
But you also said that it means nothing to have a...
The term in this context really doesn't mean anything.
So if it doesn't mean anything, put in there a year. Let's do a one year. If you're going to do it after all?
I don't make the policy calls. I just do the legal.
Okay. Well, I'm asking whoever is up here, if it means nothing to the lawyer, he's your guidance, then suggest to make it a one-year, if you're going to go through with it anyways without taking into consideration what the public is asking, then do it, but at least change it to a one-year contract, since it means nothing, according to your lawyer. It means nothing. So go ahead and change that to one year.
Excuse me, that wouldn't work because of the other provisions in the contract.
Okay.
I'm just saying, having a four-year versus indefinite doesn't make a difference.
Okay, so make it four-year then. Match it. Well, you know, why make it her infinity and beyond like Toy Story? Also, the severance package, does it equal out to 13 months?
It's a six-month severage, which, six-month severance, excuse me, which is the average city manager severance.
So did you pay that to Jose Antonio Ramirez?
He had the right to six-month severance, yes.
Did you pay it, though? I didn't say if he had the right.
No, you only get severance if you're not let go for cause.
If you're not let go for cause.
Right.
Okay. So would that happen with her as well?
Right. If she's let go for cause, she gets nothing.
Okay. But you still have to give her six months? Jose's contract was 30 days, correct?
His went by the code, which was, I believe, the 30 days, correct?
And this is six months now. Did you even give him 30 days?
Give him 30 days?
Notice that you were letting him go.
We don't do that in a non-cause, in a for-cause situation.
In a for-cause situation, okay. So that would be the same with this contract?
Correct.
Okay, those are my questions. But like I said, change that to four years instead of infinity.
Any other comments?
Good evening again, council, city manager, city attorney, staff, public. The previous city manager would almost never return my calls. And when I've called Ms. Portillo, she responded. So I like that about this candidate. She's been here through all the volatility. She's been in the background. She knows what's been going on. In my opinion, and it's really obvious that the people, in my opinion, people that are against her earning income or her even being here, it's because they want to bring the old city manager back. We were told that. In fact, the supervisor Rodrigo stood right here when he threatened the council that if you got rid of him, we'd get rid of all of you guys and we'd bring him right back. So there is ample cause, in my eye, for the terms of her contract. It makes rational sense that you would try to protect an individual who is bringing an incredible amount of discipline and incredible amount of insight to the position. Now, we've had people here say, you know, you should hire, from within, you should hire a sergeant who's never been a chief of police. But God forbid we give that opportunity to this Latina. So it's blatantly obvious what's happening here and why they're trying to take this opportunity from this woman. So I think she should earn more or be on a grading scale to go up over $200,000. I consider her an executive, and executives make millions where I'm from. So, I mean, I think that we've got her for a hell of a deal. And I think that the city council knows what they have here. I think that she knows what she can do. I think that once she focuses on the role that she really needs to play in moving this city forward, once the police department is in order and all the other things are in order, I think the city is really going to boom and become a first stop for all kinds of good things instead of the last stop that it's been for so many years. I mean, the downtown hasn't had much investment. And I tried under the last city manager and got nowhere because of the dogma and all this other stuff that has ruled this community for so long. So I'm excited to see her take this position, and I'm excited to see what she can do with it. And I'm also excited to see a woman lead this community for the first time ever in an ethical, honest, and honorable way. And I'm really sorry that, you know, that she's dealt with such nonsense in moving forward. But, Ms. Portillo, you've got a very strong council behind you. And I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure that council is around to defend you and protect you from people that have ulterior motives at this city. So I want to just say that I fully support this contract. I fully understand why it's written this way. And let's just see what happens. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Flori Perez, and I live here in Livingston. My address is 929 Orchard Way. And I have a question to Ms. Portillo. Like, how long she has been working here in the city of Livingston?
I was hired January of 2020.
Okay. Because I never, like, saw you, like, all this time, like, to participate in any programs? Or I don't know if you can remember me? Or, you know, like, I mean, if you was active in the city?
My job as the finance director was to bring forward a budget, a balanced budget, and to ensure that the audit for the city and all other grants and programs and ensure that fiscal sustainability of the city.
Like I said, I'm asking these questions because I want to know, like, so people know, like, if you was there or not. And because, like I said, for me, if I remember, I didn't see you anytime in any event, anywhere. Because it was like that, I was the first one to say, yeah, you are the right person to get this job, to be the city manager, because I see you like, like, to participate, that you like to participate in the programs or to be, like, here in the city chambers with parents or something like that, but that I didn't. So it was all. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Anna Alberto, and respectfully, I have a question for Mrs. Portillo. Mrs. Portillo, do you think you have the qualifications for this job? Do you believe?
I do.
Okay. So now, Ms. Soto, I want you to understand why I was saying my comments earlier. She mentioned, I will not do, she said earlier, I will not do anything that will put the city in a liability. Do you recall that? She just said it. Okay. So when a city manager knows by email, Mr. Raul Garcia, I've mentioned to you, when she knows that I think I've given you the opportunity to come and talk to me to clarify, you know, the way I feel, because it could be a misunderstanding, that I feel retaliated, that I'm feeling all this. And I told her that I was going to look for legal advice and does not mention it to you. Would you be concerned? Would that come to your attention? Let me ask you that question. Either, both of you, yeah. Would that bring that to your attention?
Well, we need more information, you know?
Okay.
We will look into it.
Okay. So I think that, my understanding is that you would want to ask exactly kind of what happened because I have emails where I reached out to her in August, four months. She never reached back to me. In that email, I explained to her everything that was going on. I could have been the wrong person, and I could have used legal advice, right, for whatever I was feeling. I could still do it, right? But I came to the city council and I asked each one of you guys that I'm here. You guys can reach out. You guys all have my number to speak to me so I could understand what's going on against my organization. So, Ms. Portillo, when you reached out to me and you said that you were going to help us with the youth for lights, and you were going to bring out to the city about waiving fees, how come you didn't bring it out to the council the same way you brought out every other thing that you thought it was best for the city?
Sorry. Council, Anna, we are trying, when I share with you that we are going to collaborate with the community, we brought forward the item for the installation of light poles because we felt that that was a great benefit for our residents to be able to have and enjoy parks that are lighted. Unfortunately, just like our public work superintendent shared, we have major issues with materials, with labor, that the project is, we're still pending on receiving the items that we need in order to install the poles. On the other hand, your request, it's requesting city equipment, and that is a liability for the city to lend equipment to outside entities. The request was not for a fee to be waived, which we brought to the council for other organizations. I started bringing those items to the council for not-for-profit organizations. But the request that you're making is a request to lend city equipment, and unfortunately, that does pose a liability in terms of us having equipment out there that it may cause damage or it may get damaged. Our insurance may not cover it if the city is not using it for city purpose.
And I understand that, but I don't think that was exactly my question. My question was, on the meeting you had with me and my treasurer, we asked about facility waive fees, and you were going to bring it up, which is on an email to the council. It has nothing to do with equipment. I understand the liability. It's brought up before. And I had mentioned, and other people had mentioned within the city department, that I had $1 million insurance coverage for anything that happened. I asked to please give me, I asked specifically Mr. Garcia, Mrs. Soto, King, and I asked you personally, Mr., give me options where to practice with my kids. Nothing was responded back. So how, my last question to you is, how do you feel that you know you're not responding back to emails? You know you're not communicating to your staff exactly what's going on when there's concerns. You know that there's people, residents in the city of Livingston, that don't feel that you qualify for the position. How do you feel about that? Now, I'm not saying you don't. I'm just questioning that question. And like I said, wouldn't you want to modify something to prove to all of us first? You know, I think what I understand from the attorney is they're trying to protect you because there's a recall. And I don't think this is what I understood. Maybe I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, because there's a recall going. They had to make some modifications in the contract. That's what I heard. So that's my concern. If you have nothing to hide and you are transparent, I've talked to all of you guys about transparency. There's no reason why we would not support you if you're supporting the city. And I'll tell you this, if you are transparent, I'll be the first one to support you. If you come up to me and tell me, look, Anna, it's going to take me a while to reach out. Give me some time. But if you take four months, I don't think that's an accurate time to get back to somebody. So, I mean, if you could just please answer my last question.
Mayor, I believe the organization has been given options as far as what to do. They've been in a great deal of communication and exchanges with our recreation department. Our recreation department also conducts a soccer training. So there is some competing conflicts in terms of running of our programs and running programs for other agencies. And therefore, we brought forward the solution of putting more lighting around the parks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I just want to comment. I'm not against Ms. Portillo being the city manager. You guys decide. I'm just against the amount. You know, I have three daughters, and I don't have any boys. I empower my ladies to be out strong. My oldest getting her master's. It's going to work on her doctorate. My middle one be graduating from Stanislaw State. My youngest going to Stanislaw State. And you know where they got educated? Right here in Livingston. Those gals got an education from Livingston and going out and making a mark in the world. Hopefully, they'll come back and contribute back to Livingston. Again, I'm not against it. I'm just against the amount. Being her first job, I think it should be a little bit less generous and let her prove. And I'll be 100% back you. If you can show, you know, that you're qualified and able to do the job, I'll support you 100%. I just don't support the $180,000. I think it should be a lot less. You know, because where do you go from there? You know, start here and work your way up. You know, I didn't start out at, you know, I started out at $3 an hour when I was working. Now I'm making, you know, $40 an hour. You know, so work your way up to it, you know? Don't just hand it out. Just, you know, let her prove that she's worth the 180. But start out a little bit less and use that money to give back to the community, fix our roads, you know? Give some of that to the employees, you know? So that's all I said. But, you know, more power to you to make the decision that you need to make. But, you know, with everything, you have to prove yourself. So thank you very much. Have a Merry Christmas. And guys, be safe going home.
Merry Christmas. Any other comments? Bring it back to...
Oh, fine. I have the two emails.
Yeah, sorry. Go ahead.
The first email is from Archie Flores. I do not agree with having Vanessa as the new city manager. What is the urgency council member? She doesn't answer calls, emails, and hides if residents want to talk to her. She only has six months of experience, and she is not vested in the community because if she was, she would respect her employees and treat them all fairly. Did you know that there have been at least two grievances filed against her by two different employees from two different departments? I bet that if the employees could cast secret votes out of fear and retribution, the great majority would issue a vote of no confidence. City Hall feels like a funeral home, and the employees only talk to her out of necessity. They don't believe her when she talks and says she will do the right thing. This is the person you want permanently run the city. I know we can't do better than this. You, city council, will approve this contract because you want to further your me, myself, and I syndrome. In other words, corruption. Show us tonight that this is not the case by holding off on this item.
Can you please repeat the name who wrote that? Was that an employee?
Archie Flores. Archie Flores. Second email is from Merla Hernandez. "Evening, council. When I heard Ms. Portillo would be interim city manager, I did have high hopes. Yet, given the progress of these last months, I do not feel she is ready for the, for a job like this. Maybe in the future, but not now. I do wish she would have taken a, taken on a project and shown this community what she is capable of. So, so much is pending with no resolution. This contract is meant for someone with so much more experience and qualifications. So, yeah, I'm very concerned about all of this." That's it.
Thank you, Monica. So bring it back to council for any comments? The council?
Yes, if I may. So, once again, but then, and then again, this is just my own personal opinion and the way I analyze things. I would not be able to support this because of the lack of experience, the process, and the language. And as, I, I, I think more than a couple of people previously tonight, they mentioned that the way that this has been done and the way that this, this has been structured, this is a way to protect an individual. And, and, and that's what, and that's exactly my point. The process, the language, and the lack of experience. This has been, the way this has been done is to protect an individual. Thank you.
Any other comments? Any other comments?
I just want to say that I appreciate Vanessa taking this risk. First off, the, when she was offered the interim and sitting with us and discussing with us through this contract that she will cover everything that is needed to protect the city. She said, "Yes, I will." And anything in this contract stated under there, um, I don't know what item it is, but it does give all the conditions where she will be terminated if there are abuses of, you know, it comes to mind, city, city property, any fraud. All of that is listed in her contract. So when we look at her contract and she has provided us with the leadership that she has and taken on many responsibilities and had moved forward with projects that were left with little guidance and has gotten us here today where we're going to, to decide whether she's a, a best fit for the city. And I believe that, that we're there. But we don't want to be here, we want to be better. And how we can attain that is by change. And for me, I believe that she's going to make that happen for the city of Livingston in all aspects. Positive change. And as coun, as a council member, I am looking forward to seeing what Vanessa can do for our city. Because she has already shown us that she can handle this under pressure despite everything that is coming at her. Despite everybody with the, in this chamber with the accusations, the bullying, the badgering with little faith in our council and in her. So moving forward, I believe that supporting her is one of the best things that we can do. She's gonna provide insights and, and she's already let us know that she's had 17 years' experience in a governmental position. Seeing the ins and outs, sitting here, watching city council meetings, hearing from previous city manager, some of the items that were brought before council and voted on. And taking into account that, that, you know, she, she does her own research. She thinks for herself, just like we do. And we're not given credit for that. So when we want to put faith in a person, we don't make them prove it. She's, she's guided us. She's already put some projects and led us to the ending. She picked up and we are still moving forward. So I respect that and I respect any decision that is made tonight. And again, thank you for, Vanessa, for putting your best forward and taking a risk back with us when you needed to.
Thank you, Councilwoman Soto. Any other comments by council?
In regards to myself, um, I know that people said that she didn't have the experience or lacks the experience, but she's been doing the job for the past five, six months. You know, she's proven herself. What I, when I became the mayor, one thing I advocated for was everybody be treated equally in regards to the community and the council. And she provides that, she's a professional, she doesn't take sides, she's by the book. And it's been, you know, refreshing to see that, that she's not a politician city manager. She's a, a city manager and that's what we needed. She, she is looking out for the best interest of the city. Aggressive liability, um, decision-making. So that's what she's looking at and that's what she's proven and demonstrated in the past several months. She was gladly accepted the position as interim city manager or acting city manager with nothing to go on, with a blank computer, with nothing to fall out on. And she picked up the pieces with, you know, um, whatever she could, um, moving forward. She was able to see firsthand the things that were going on and, um, you know, and the things that we had concerns about. So she saw it firsthand and she has been able to address some of those things. She has a good vision for the city, uh, she's motivated. She has a, you know, strong foundation with family. She's a, very proud to say that she's, you know, be the first Latina female as a city manager, Spanish-speaking, humble beginnings. Instead of judging her and sitting here and, and all that, maybe you should schedule a meeting with her and, and kind of learn where she's coming from, what, what her kind of experience. It's not a lot about education or where department she worked at, but life experience plays a big role in how she fits in the city of Livingston. So I'm very proud to, to have worked, you know, worked alongside with you the past few months and having regular contact. In regards to not replying to emails and like that, I mean, she's, I don't know if you guys know, but she's in charge of multiple departments. She's not only this acting, uh, city manager, she's over finance, she's over public work, she's over the police department. Nobody, it wouldn't be easy for just anybody to do that and still have the city function and move along. The ship would have sank right away, but she kept it afloat. So she's not getting the credit she deserves, which is very unfortunate and very sad to see that happening. She deserves the full credit. She's, you know, thought about things, uh, thinking outside the box. Had to act and, and, and under pressure when she needed to and, and, and considered multiple things, you know, at a moment's notice. So she did what she had to do. So, um, some of the things, for example, that she has accomplished on her own and like Councilwoman Maria Soto stated, she does her own research. Like, we don't interfere with her decision-making or tell her what to do. She solves the problems, does her own research and, and puts forth the best options for the council. That's her job, is to provide us with, um, options for us to make the best decision in regards to policymaking. She's in charge of the day-to-day operations and staffing. Some of the things she's accomplished is lever negotiations. We're all five bargaining groups, it's a big task. Like the other lady mentioned, things hadn't been moving forward in the beginning of the first part of the year, for whatever reason. But she was able to, you know, get down to it and, and make that happen. She's been working on different city projects, uh, street signage, sidewalk repairs, the courtyard fencing, city hall remodel, um, the rate study, implementation of water sewer solid and waste rates. When she was the city, um, the finance director, not only did she do that, she also was already thinking about different projects to take on. One of the first things we, we immediately identified was that corner. I remember she was already thinking about even stepping out of her role as a finance director and addressing some of the things she saw that weren't being addressed. So that was taking, you know, she was taking the initiative to, to, to address a lot of things. She, you guys are right, she's good with numbers. She closed the fiscal year 2020, 21 with a positive position despite the revenue challenges presented by the COVID-19 pandemic. She delivered a balanced budget to, to obviously the council and, and myself. Maintained city operations running despite leadership changes. Like, like I mentioned earlier, all of the different department heads, uh, people quitting on her, leaving. You know, a lot of challenges she's, she's gone through. In regards to office hours or whatever, she, you know, she's here, um, available. And think about it, you're running multiple departments, like, it's gonna be hard to return a call sometimes. It's gonna be hard to return an email. She's, I mean, her, her responsibilities are, are, are great and she had to prioritize on what she needs to do. So priority is to, um, the safeguard of the city and, and, you know, make sure when you turn on the water, it's still running, uh, public safety is there. So of course she's gonna miss some emails and some calls or whatever. But you have to look at the overall, um, overall, um, production she's done and she's done a great job. I know her family's proud of her and her husband and kids. We're proud of her as, as the council or as the mayor. Uh, I, I could say, um, that I think this is the best decision for Livingston. We need, uh, different leadership. Like I mentioned earlier, somebody is gonna not be a politician, but actually operation-wise and decision-making is fair, looks at the different things and what's best for the community. With what that said, anybody else have, anything else to say? So, yeah, Vanessa, we're proud of you and, and you've done an excellent job for the city of Livingston. Anything else?
Any motions, direction, comments?
I motion to approve.
A motion by Councilwoman Maria Soto.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Councilwoman King. Monica?
Motion approved by a vote of 4-1.
Thank you, congratulations.
Mayor, if I may, um, Mayor, Mayor Protem, city council members.
Yes.
Really wanted to share that I'm, I'm very appreciative of your trust and support that you have put on, onto me for the past five months. I believe that the city, despite any challenge that has come about, we have great opportunities. And I am, I, I am really looking forward to capitalize on those opportunities and make sure that Livingston, it's, it's a city that, that it's, it's, it's not just, um, great for businesses, but also for the residents and the families that make, makes Livingston their home.
Thank you, Vanessa. I just, I have to, I have to comment on this. You know, they have the contract, some say it's too much or whatever the case, there's safeguards on there for her. But, uh, yeah, we're in a, in a very difficult situation overall, politically speaking. Yeah, there's been comments on the, out there that, yeah, she's, they're gonna replace her, they're gonna, uh, you know, bring the previous city manager back. So those safeguards are there and I'm not seeing that specifically to her, but the, the position, the office. She's doing great things for Livingston and it'd be unfair for the whole community to lose her just because they want to maintain, but it's been happening for the past two decades to continue. So, yeah, those safeguards are there. Not specific for her, it's for the office and for what she could bring to, uh, for what's best for the community. So we're gonna move on to discussion and direction on a state, or state.
Mr. Mayor?
Sorry, go ahead.
Can we move or put that for the next?
What?
Can we move that for the next?
Yeah, yeah, let's move it to the next.
Thank you.
Oh, really? Oh, yeah, let's do it, let's go. It's gonna be quick anyway, so we're not, it's just gonna be straightforward. Discussion and direction on a skate park. So I had, uh, brought this in the last council meeting regarding having a discussion or direction for staff to look into this. The reason where I, I wanted to bring it is I know there's been a, a big ask for, for the community or they've been asking for this for a long time. I truly believe we're in a position to make this a possibility. Not only this, but other, other projects, recreation, obviously we got the grant, but, um, there's other opportunities besides that project. And I want to make clear that we're not looking into putting the skate park as part of that project. This is a completely separate thing. As people know, that grant is very specific to what we had planned and had all those community meetings about. So this is completely separate, uh, would be in a different location. But what I want to add is just, uh, make this, uh, there's a lot of priorities, obviously, but I know this is something that we could work on and, and collaboration with the recreation department and the Recreation Commission, uh, make it a priority that, uh, this is something the community has been asking for a long time. And identify a plan as soon as possible to get it done. I know there's multiple ways of doing it, um, working with different organizations. I know that there's people in the community that have been looking into this for some time, but it's a real possibility in the next few months, this could be done and make it happen. Council, any other comments? Yeah, I'll take it off or put the comment?
All right, so this was done in the past, so I just wanna, um, I forgot exactly what happened, but I, I remember it's gonna be at Arcane, it was supposed to be at Arcadian Park. But I just want to remind some people, because I, I have some, um, people I know that skate and they asked me to say a few things. So one is, uh, make it centrally located so that most skaters can skate to it from anywhere in the town. Make it a make it not, you know, make, make it big, make it better than Outwaters, uh, a little bit bigger than Outwater. They think Outwater is too small. So make it bigger than Outwater. Even though I know we want it to be for the Livingston community, make people want to come to Livingston because they like the park, because it's better than, than theirs. And then, uh, just so we don't have to deal with it later, make sure it's lighted, lighted park. Those are the comments that I, that I was, uh, I wanted to make about the skate park so that when you guys go into planning or thinking about what you want it to do, uh, keep those in mind. And also I just want to tell you guys that just because I, I come up here and ask questions doesn't mean that sometimes I don't agree with what you're doing or, but people need to ask. We need to ask and sometimes once you clarify it, then you're, you know, then we're probably good. So, you know, Gang and Deep Jose, Ms. Vanessa Juan, Raoul, Maria, and Monica, you guys hopefully have a peaceful and Merry Christmas. And you too, Mr. Lawyer, even though I, right now I see you as a Grinch, I still wish you and your family a Merry Christmas too. So, thank you all, this was a late dinner. Congratulations, uh, you know, I had questions, but I, I do think, uh, she's doing the job of probably four people right now, right? You guys should get her an assistant, uh, you know, now that you've already got her, I think she needs an assistant so she can answer the questions of the public.
Catherine Chela Rodriguez, an official historian. There ought to be plans for a skate park already drawn up in a drawer or a cabinet somewhere in the city. Because I remember when a city manager negotiated $100,000 donation from a developer and we had several meetings here where the community came together to agree on a design of a skate park. And the only thing- And the only thing that was standing in the way of actually getting it built was getting the money to get it built and putting it in the right location. So the prep work, as far as act, the engineering of a skate park, that should already be done and those plans should already be in an office somewhere. We shouldn't have to be spending another $100,000 to draw up what we already have.
Please involve skaters. I can bring people when you're ready.
Yes, definitely, we'll need your help. So be a collaborative effort between people, obviously, that are familiar with skating and organizations and the Recreation Department. But any other comments? So I wanted, yeah, so I wanted to bring it to council. I don't want to step on anybody's toes like the Recreation Commission or anything like that, but it's something that I think we all probably agree that's a need or something that the community's been asking for. Even, even before the, the dog park, I think it's had been ongoing discussions in the way back. So I know that's the dog park or something else that's been discussed. But at this time, I would, there is an agreement, give this, or a direction to, to staff to look into the possibility, come up with a plan to make this a real, you know, look into those plans that have been here, that were drawn out in the, in the past, kind of what, what work was done so we could pick it up from there and get it done as soon as possible. Are you guys okay with that? You guys good?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, I think that is a great idea. Also, within the research, I would like to see additional information, not only for a skate park, but for an all-wheels park. I know that this has been a conversation in the community for quite some time at least. I know there was, that, that skate park conversation was probably around 10 years ago. But this additional conversation, as time has gone by and, and more kids are not only involved in with skateboards, but with, there's, I'm not sure if the park in Oakdale is an all-wheels park where they, they were as designed not only for skateboards, but also for longboards and for bikes and wheelchairs and stuff like that. So if, if we are, you know, now that we have this opportunity to look into something like this, it would be wise to look into an all-wheels park and see what kind of the difference is and, you know, and try to facilitate it for the most kids as possible. Thank you.
Vanessa, you're comfortable with that direction you received tonight?
Absolutely, yes.
Thank you.
Go research and bring something forward.
Perfect, yes.
See, Rob Durkic has a program that helped design and maybe even build skate parks. You should look into that.
Can you send it to me?
Rob Durkic, yeah.
Send it to me. Okay, and regarding consideration of future agenda items, I know we talked about, I know that it's going to be the mid-year budget review coming up soon. I know I had put on the agenda, but I took it off, also a goal setting or vision after one year of things we want to accomplish for the next year. And that'll be scheduled sometime in, in January as well. I know, I know we've been working on another recreation thing. I know we've been working with the ATV kids in regards to allowing them or giving them space to, to do their, their thing. I think we need to kind of formalize it. I know we'd kind of been doing on the background, working with them. Seems like what, things have been working out, but we need to really sit, like, having a, a meeting about it and, and touch bases. And I know we talked about it with Tom in regards to liability and all that. So we need to really sit down and have that discussion in the public forum. Because I think it's, it's a great thing for those kids that use ATVs and have a space as well. And then there'll be other things coming up as well. Anything else, Pete, council wants to put on the agenda?
Yes, I would like to see if it's possible within the next couple of meetings or so to get an update on the Spain New Du program and see what has worked, what has not worked and, and, you know, see if we need to change, fix something or just an update. Thank you.
Perfect. Council, I'm meeting adjourned at 11:55.